...LA River for a symbolic joining of the cities of Los Angeles and Manila, Philippines, through their waterways. The two metro areas have signed a sister river agreement that will change friendships and maybe river development along their waterfronts. Anna Marcos has more.
It was a sharing of cultures, people, and river water. This pouring together of the LA River and the Pasig River of Manila and the Philippines was mostly symbolic, but it marked an important event as the two cities signed a sister river agreement. Both sides agree to work together and share ideas as each city embarks on revitalizing its major river.
For us to be able to celebrate this sister river agreement is very appropriate and very strategic as we try to rehabilitate both our rivers.
We share the same passion, interest, and commitment in restoring and rehabilitating our river system. It is also important basically because we may be able to share technologies.
The big question for both the LA River and the Pasig River is how to develop their waterfronts while focusing on sustainability, water conservation, recreation, and the environment. The Pasig River is now further along in its development plans than the LA River.
The river revitalization is an international effort to bring back a certain kind of public life until we learn from each other and our efforts around the world.
LA has the largest Filipino population in the U.S., just another reason for LA and Manila to keep sharing when it comes to both the business of developing river waterfronts and the business of developing new friendships. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
This is the fifth sister river signing agreement for LA, but the first for the city of Manila. When most of us go to work, we don't worry about whether or not we'll be coming home that night, but that's the risk a group of individuals take every day when they step onto the job. Rasha Goel tells us how the city honored a group of individuals who put their lives on the line for all of us.
Yana, I'm at the 37th Annual San Fernando Valley E-Awards where 13 public safety officers are being recognized for their courageous and committed work. Now, what's interesting when you talk to these officers is how they are so humble about the hard work they do every day to keep the city of angels safe.
Officer Tamara Myers, a 16-year veteran with the LAPD, remembers the moment her team saved a life, and that's why she's here today, being honored for her bravery.
A lady was having a very bad day, and she was unaware of what she was doing, and she was out on a window ledge, and we helped bring her back in without any further harm to her.
Among the honorees was Officer Troy Williams, a 27-year veteran of the LAPD, who was recognized for his plan to eliminate traffic deaths.
And so by presenting this information to the City Council and to individual persons with a lot of horsepower, if you will, I've showed them the importance of speed limits and how we, as a police department, need to be able to force these laws.
Today, we get to honor them and say thank you. Thank you to them, thank you to their families, their spouses that stay home at night, hoping and praying and making sure that they make it home. They put a lot out there and sacrifice, and that's why today is very special.
And while many of these award recipients consider it part of their job, they're not taking all the credit.
What I've been honored for is just part of my job, so it's just nice to be recognized and I thank all the people that helped me along the way to get this award.
Captain Danny Wu, 15 years with the LAPD, was recognized for his St. Baldrick's fundraiser, which has raised more than $1 million.
This will be our 15th year, and every year we gather LAPD and LAPD and people in the community, and we shave our heads to raise money for childhood cancer research.
It reminds us that the community cares, and the community cares when we go over and above what we're normally expected to do. And really, at the essence of police officers and firefighters, we want to help people. That's why we got into this profession.
And for the great work they do, this tribute is just a small way to acknowledge the large impact these local heroes make every day. In the San Fernando Valley, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
The E-Awards are a San Fernando Valley tradition, which were started by former councilmember Dennis Zine. Over in Hollywood, it was another event that not only honored cops, but also the classic cop cars of the past, and it was all for a good cause. Anna Marcos takes us to the 13th Annual 10-4 Day Event.
Hollywood's annual 10-4 Day Parade helped highlight not only classic TV shows about law enforcement, but most importantly, the classic law and emergency vehicles of the past.
All right, here we go. Whenever the laws of any state are broken, a duly authorized organization swings into action.
10-4 may now be a common slang term for "okay," but it comes from the Police Code for Message Received, and on this day, law enforcement and emergency agencies from all over LA County came to celebrate the 10-4 tradition and join in the law and order mayhem.
These are all old-style police cars celebrating 10-4.
Proceeds from 10-4 Day go to the Hollywood Police Activities League, which provides alternatives to gangs and crime for young people and opportunities to connect with police officers in positive ways, and most of those taking part in this event would give a big 10-4 to that. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
For more information on the Hollywood Police Activities League, visit HollywoodPAL.org. A new jobs plan that makes it easier to do business within the city. Getting around town is also about to get easier as bike share expands to more areas in the city, and an unused alley gets transformed into a neighborhood resource. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles City Council approved a plan that makes it easier to do business in the city, in part by establishing a small business commission and cutting down on bureaucratic red tape. The Job Creation Plan is comprised of 35 ideas and reforms that solve problems businesses face when they do business in or with the city of Los Angeles. Councilmembers said the jobs plan is aimed at shifting the city's focus toward being more supportive of businesses. Councilmember Paul Krikorian, who chairs the Ad-Hoc Jobs Committee, said these are important changes in the way Los Angeles treats the business community that will help promote job and economic growth. One of the recommendations is the creation of the Business Advancement Team, a group of city officials who will advocate for businesses within the city. The plan also calls for setting up a small business commission to give business people a way to provide input and communicate with city officials. Getting from place to place in the city is about to get easier and a lot more fun. In October, the Metro Planning and Programming Committee approved funding to expand Metro Bike Share in 2017 to new service areas in Pasadena, San Pedro, Wilmington, and Venice, with new stations where riders can rent bikes using either their Metro Tap or credit card. The Metro Bike Share Program was officially rolled down in downtown Los Angeles by Mayor Eric Garcetti this past July, a launch that included nearly 65 stations and 1,000 bikes. The program is designed to improve mobility and access for residents and visitors via shared-use bikes and docking stations located in key locations with easy access traveling from one location to another.
This is going to be for people who maybe who don't own a bike already.
In Council District 9, community members, volunteers, and city officials came out to celebrate the completion of a project that transformed a debris-filled alley into a green alley by adding murals, infiltration trenches, native plants, permeable pavement, dry wells, and other rainwater harvesting elements. The new Avalon Green Alley promotes walkability and sustainability, providing easier access to and from schools, parks, and the local grocery store.
It was a project with sanitation in Council District 9 and the Charles Republic Land. We put on this ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the start of many great green alleys that we hope to do throughout Los Angeles.
LA's Metropolitan Transportation Authority is always looking for ways to entice Angelinos to go metro, and this time, they did it with a little Taste of Soul. Metro authorities encouraged residents to take metro bus and train to the annual Metro Taste of Soul Festival. Anna Marcos gets a taste.
The drumming had a lot of soul in it, but it also had a bit of La Raza in it. All cultures were welcome as the 11th Annual Metro Taste of Soul Festival kicked off in the historic Crenshaw District with a whole lot of dancing and even a little bit of twerking.
What this is about is black people celebrating, about taking care of people.
The chicken was smokin', maybe at times a little too smokin', but with all the barbecue meats and southern fried chicken, the rice and curried cabbage, and all that Taste of Soul going on, it's a good bet that food was one of the big attractions.
We have soul food.
So there's yummy catfish, there's...
Mother potatoes.
Mother potatoes, there's hot links, there's hot dogs, there's jambalaya. There's shrimp, there's crawfish, there's spices. It's seasoned perfectly. It's filled with love. It's my parents' recipe, mom and dad.
What? Even some pool boy sandwiches straight out of New Orleans, and then there was this homeboy industry.
And it's Taco Man Burrito Boy.
Yeah, it's lying in Taco Man Burrito Boy.
Taco Man Burrito Boy.
We get it. Taco Man Burrito Boy is making its stamp on the culinary scene. Meanwhile, the freebies were another big hit.
They even have free smoothies from McDonald's, and I was trying to get like five or six of them.
I want some hand sanitizer and a whistle.
Another surprise hit, the cops who stopped in for the festival.
The LAPD is here, hiring folks, taking applications.
Music, food, freebies, dancing, fun, and good times. And if you were too full to eat another bite, that was no excuse. You could always get your groove on and get down to make room for more. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The metro line to LAX, which passes through the Crenshaw District, is now halfway built. If you think it doesn't snow in LA, well, think again. Get ready to go tubing during the city's inaugural Snow Day LA. Love the movies? Well, here's your chance to catch all your favorites during the AFI Film Fest, and a local art exhibit pays tribute to loved ones who are no longer with us. All this and this week's Things to Do. Peaceful drifting snow fills the night sky, trees decorated with icicles, blue-toned colors, and shimmering lights. On the hour, every hour, the music fades away to a news report forecasting heavy snowfalls. The energy amplifies with rustling trees and gusts of wind as Snow Los Angeles turns into a blizzard. Snow blowing in the air quadruples as the city's inaugural Snow Day LA gets underway. The event includes more than 10,000 square feet of snow tubing across nine acres of Winter Wonderland. Enjoy food trucks, drinks, giant singing snowmen, and tubing lanes of varying lengths and thrill levels to satisfy every age group. The snowfall starts November 10th and doesn't end until December 23rd at Elysian Park. For more, visit snowlosangeles.com. The 30th Annual AFI Film Festival swings into high gear, offering movie buffs a chance to check out a mix of films, lectures, and special discussions at various venues. Movie stars, writers, directors will descend upon Hollywood to promote and talk about their creative visions. Don't miss it. The festival runs November 10th through the 17th. For more, visit AFI.com. Celebrate your loved ones who have passed in this annual exhibit called Sacred Memories at El Pueblo Historical Cultural Monument. Here, you'll see a variety of artwork from 25 different artists who were selected from a competitive application process. The works all have a story to tell. The exhibit is ongoing until December 4th. Check it out at 125 Paseo de la Plaza. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Good morning. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November 8th. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November 8th. I'd like to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscayna, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Harris Dawson moves. Englander seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves, and Bloomingfield seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, I'd like to ask that all rise in chambers will be led today by Bob Bloomingfield in the salute of our flag. Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Before we go through the agenda, we're moving away from our speaker cards to an electronic process. So in the back of the council chambers, you'll see we have new kiosks, and we also have staff in the back that will help you. You go to the kiosk, and they will tell you how to enter your name and what agenda items you want to speak on, and then it'll register on my computer, and I will call you. I know it might be, it's different, and it might be somewhat inconvenient in the beginning, but if we stick with it, I'm sure that this is going to work out and be a much more efficient way. I really want to thank our own city people for building the kiosk, putting it together, and again, staff is in the back. It is not something that we hired outside people to do, so I'm very proud of them and the work that they did. So if you want to speak, it's basically, it will explain to you what it is you need to do, but we will have staff, at least in the beginning, in the back, to answer any questions that you might have. So with that said, why don't we go through the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 1K, N, and Y to November 22nd, items 3 and 9 to December 7th, and item 28 to November 22nd.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Please continue.
Additionally, the Department of Building and Safety requests that the following items be received and filed. Item 1B, due to an ownership change. Item 1G, as the lien was rescinded. Items 1M, P, Q, and U, as the liens have been paid in full.
Thank you. So without objection, that'll be the order. So let's continue.
Items 1 through 4 are items noted for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 1, 2, and 4.
Okay, why don't we, at this time, vote on item 3?
Item 3 was continued to December 7th.
Okay, then let's move on to the next section. We'll hold those items, and we'll move to the next section on our agenda.
Items 5 through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee reports for items 6, 7, and 8 have been submitted and circulated for consideration, and the ordinance for item 5 has been submitted and circulated.
Okay, Mr. Bonin? Let's hold item 14 per Mr. Bonin's request. Mr. Englander? Item 10 for Mr. Englander. Mr. Bloomingfield? 8 for Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Krikorian?
Call item 11, special.
11 for Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Corretts? 5 for Mr. Corretts. Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Continue.
Items 17 through 36 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items except 24, 25, 26, and 31.
Okay, well, let's vote on those items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, continue.
That takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, are you ready? Okay, the floor is yours. Mr. Sadio? Did you, before we start, did you need something? Gotcha.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues in public. I'm really happy today to honor what has been a mainstay and a real sight to see if you're ever in the Bull Heights neighborhood, and we're happy to honor today Albert and Beatrice Cardion on the 50th anniversary of their restaurant, Alan Bee's Mexican Restaurant on First Street in Bull Heights. Alan Bee's... Alan Bee's opened on November 15th, 1966, with a simple dream of bringing their authentic homemade recipes to serve a community with a strong demand for excellent and genuine Mexican food. Since their opening, Alan Bee's has become part of Bull Heights' proud history with a loyal customer base that transcends generations. Whenever I go, I see people coming as far away as San Bernardino or other places, or people say they're just passing through LA and they had to stop by Alan Bee's. Beatrice was born in San Bernardino and Albert in Santa Monica, but with a Mexican family history with roots in Sonora, El Deje, and Chihuahua, Mexico. From day one, the Cardions brought authenticity and incredible flavors to the table, and they have succeeded beyond their own goals and wildest dreams. They are not only a staple of Bull Heights, Angelinos come from near and far to eat their famous bean and cheese burritos, and homemade green chili sauce, and other delicious offerings. As a longtime Bull Heights resident, I can tell you that Alan Bee's has three crowds. They have the lunch crowd and the dinner crowd, as you might expect, where long lines are the norm, but they also have the after-school crowd from students from nearby schools. But they also have the after-school crowd from students from nearby schools, of which I was once a proud participant as a student from Cilegian High School, walking on my way home sometimes. Alan B's set a new standard for Mexican fast food in this city and one that all others are judged by. They have stayed authentic for 50 years, never compromising taste, quality or ingredients. And through the years, their steadfast commitment to not sway from excellence has resulted in Alan B's being recognized on a number of occasions by noted food critics like Jonathan Gold as offering one of the best burritos in the city and indeed the entire nation. When you think about all the Mexican restaurants in this city and throughout the country, that is really quite an accomplishment. The restaurant is still proudly family-owned. It is now operated by Albert and Beatrice's two sons, Al Jr. and Ken, along with Al Jr.'s son, Ryan. So you have three generations working here. And in many ways, it mirrors their customers' experience. Those who ate at the restaurant when they were younger returned with their children and grandchildren. I want to congratulate Al Jr., Ken and Ryan for keeping this wonderful family tradition going. And this Saturday, November 12th, there will be a 50th anniversary celebration to Alan B's starting at 11:00 a.m. Their first 250 customers will have the opportunity to purchase two bean and cheese burritos for just a buck. Alan B's has, have also hit another milestone. On Saturday, they will celebrate their 64th wedding anniversary. And we congratulate them on that as well. Their success is an example of what hard work and dedication can achieve both in your personal and professional life. What Albert and Beatrice Cardion, along with her family, have accomplished for 50 years is truly an amazing feat. And for that, we congratulate them. At this time, I'd like to invite up to the microphone Ken to say a few words. Ken?
Thank you, council members. Really appreciate you bringing us up for this milestone. I have so many things I'd like to say about my, my experience and my journey through the years. I get a little emotional talking about it because I remember my parents that had a lot of sacrifice. Remember them getting home at 2:00 in the morning and kissing me goodnight, kissing me goodbye at 6:00 in the morning when they were going back to the, back to work. So I just want to thank you and I appreciate this recognition along with my family. Thank you so much. Yes. Here is my father, Al, Cardion, my mother, Beatrice Cardion.
Give him a round of applause. Come on.
My brother, Al, and my nephew, Ryan. So thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And we brought you each a burrito. And we brought you a little gift, so you can remember us by. Hopefully you can join us on Saturday, okay? Thank you so much.
Mr. Sadio, did you?
Al, brother, let me, let me thank you because you have done a great thing for us and for our community. You've set a high standard for the culinary tastes. And long before Jonathan Gold discovered you, anybody would ask me, what's the best burrito? And I would say, the best burrito is at Alan B's. And this was decades. And we are in our fourth generation in my family, because I'm from Bull Heights. And we're in our fourth generation. It was something my parents enjoyed. Quick pull-up right in front. But what brings me the greatest pleasure, besides the, the green chili cheese, what brings me the greatest pleasure is my granddaughters. Because now my son takes them. It's a very special afternoon. They sit out there and both of them just love the green chili cheese. I mean, they just love it. They sit there. It's the treat they look for, for the end of the week. And so you've brought tremendous joy to my family for four generations. And so on behalf of all the families of Bull Heights and those who are enjoying you throughout the world, thank you.
Correct, Mr. Sadio. I, when I went away to college, one of the first things I did when I'd get back home in the neighborhood was go to Alan B's and get a burrito. It reminded me of home. It reminded me of the neighborhood. So thank you so much. And it's a small little place on 1st Street, so don't miss it. If you go, try to find it. You would have wondered how this small little place has so many people going to it and remembered and certainly a historical place in Bull Heights, if not the city of LA. So on behalf of the city, it's our honor to present this resolution to Alan B's for your 50 years of service, of providing all of us a great place to eat. And most importantly as well, the memories. Congratulations.
Just give them another round of applause. No, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I want to call Mr. Previn, Eric Previn. And Mr. Previn, you have Items 27, 29, 30, 32, 34, and after that, your general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD2 and congratulations to the, the great restaurant. So Item number 34, sir, I have to, of course, acknowledge your and Mr. Englander's effort here at facilitating the move into an office for the Neighborhood Council in Sunland to Hung, I think. Wow. This is really, comes at a great time as you have maneuvered yourself into the controlling seat of CD7. Even though Fuentes is not available, there is no voter constituent. So this is a real problem. And I've asked you and the city attorney and the mayor to look at the governance issues there because you're out of the bounds of the charter and that is a real problem. But this is at least a nice way to say thank you to some of the people who had been in conflict with City Hall during a number of years. And in addition to that, it's worth noting that Item number 16, too, of the proposed properties in which you're going to do some affordable housing, or I think it's intended to be permanent supportive housing, are in CD7. And there is nobody to say no, or yes, or great. So that is just very, very worrisome. And I think those are the two properties on San Fernando and then also on Foothill, sir. So you have done an extremely sneaky but effective job. Item number 32 is an RFP, which almost was thrown down by the sight of one because it's ordinarily kind of predetermined. But in this case, it's 1.1 million for the H-Sid. And the new category, which seems to make it look like an RFP, has to do with E procurement or filing. I can't remember exactly. So take a close look at that and let's see who gets that contract. Item number 29 and 30, in one case, you're going to be establishing an HPOZ, thanks to Mr. Weezer and I believe it's El Sereno Berkshire area, The Craftsman's. And then on Item 30, you're amending one, which is another little detail where probably somebody is getting something that will work out very nicely for them. And once again, the heroes are on that side of the, the arch. Thank you. And 27 is Englander and Kerkorian teaming up. So that's always of interest. And in this case, it's about beautification. They have decided that, that we need a much better system and internet website to facilitate beautification projects in the districts. And they're right. And I assume this is going to work very nicely for the guys who are running, who will then be able to post onto this. Hopefully we can get this going very soon. And just in conclusion, sir, I do want to comment on the city clerk's work on this, this kiosk is very nice.
No, stay on the agenda.
Well, I mean, I think.
No, just stay on the agenda, item.
Well, I am on the agenda, sir. The signing up for the agenda.
No, Mr. Previn, come on.
You don't like the kiosk?
No, I want you to just play by the rules. That's all.
You want me to play by the rules? Okay.
Yeah. Look, you want to, you want to continue or you want to sit down?
I'll continue my general public comment in three seconds.
Can you give him his one minute?
Right. Sure. Okay, great. So you brought up the rules, sir, which you don't follow. The charter is very specific that when a seat is vacated by a council member, there are two options. One is to appoint a constituent of that district to serve until there's an election. And the alternative, as you know, is not to step in as the council president. That is why the, I've asked the mayor, I've written about this in the New York, in the Daily News with my brother Joshua and also on City Watch, because we really do feel that the fix is right in front of us, which is that the council has to find a resident, someone like, for example, Nicole Chase got 5,000 votes last time there was an election. I don't even know her, but someone like that should be seated. So that these items that come before, there are also another six items today on the agenda. A $19,000 against some guy's property lien, all these things. There is no CD7 leader. And that is not a discredit to you, sir, but you're busy with CD7.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh, John Walsh? So. So Mr. Walsh, 33, 35, 36. Any general public comment?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. Check out the election special for number of 29. HollywoodHighlands.org tweeting at Hollywood Dems. And number 29, this is, this concerns a proposed historic preservation overlay zone. That's when they want to take your home and give it to a developer. They set up, they're going to make it easier for them to take your home or surround you by development. There's not one person up here, black, white or brown, it's an all-white jury, who is going to stand up for you against the developers. The only reason you watch me is because you know that my backside is not owned by a developer compared to the 15 backsides up here. Number 35 is this is Well Child Family Center, five and a half, not to exceed $5,750,000, which will go to a favored developer. Anytime they want to push something through, they put sick child or well child in here. And they're knowing, oh, you can't, no, that's what. I'm telling you right now that everything that's here, and also the final maps. What are the final maps? The maps decide whether or not, if you live west of La Brea, you used to be able to say, well, they're not going to come into my neighborhood because I'm a Jew. That's my, Bertha Berg is my grandmother. But no more, I just want the Jews to understand, they pretty much tapped out east of La Brea. And now they're going into your neighborhood, just the way the Nazis went into your neighborhood. And my relatives got their Jewish ass out of Hungary. And those who said, oh, no, don't worry, the generals will control Hitler, they ended up as lampshades. I'm telling you right now, take a look at these final maps. The final map decides whether they can build around, remember, they build around you. They build around you and force you out. Because number one in this city, the number one thing here is development, development, development. Even the city, even the Times said the other day that Hillary doesn't even trust Garcetti. She thinks he's a lightweight. Well, Hillary and I agree on one thing. Now I'm going to go into my minute of public comment.
Can we give him his public comment minute?
Okay. HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. Today is Election Day. We get to decide on Measure M. I got, all the stuff I get in the mail saying vote for Measure M. They don't even mention it's a tax. It's a forever tax. Eighty-five billion, eight billion dollars a year. The money will go for a tunnel. We don't need any tunnels. All the tunnels do is increase development. And wherever the development is, it's going to affect the minorities first and the Jews second. Okay? We need right now, Measure M, no, no, a million times no, a billion times no. You will turn, there will be no cost overruns if this passes. The price tag will be gastronomical, astronomical. HollywoodHighlands.org. Remember, everything I say turns out to be true.
Okay, Mr. Herman? Okay, Mr. Herman, Items 1, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 34. Item 4? 35, and general public comment? Item 2? No. No, you have to speak on the items. I said, Item 3 is being continued.
Yes, master. Yes. What's the first one you want me on, sir?
I don't care, just the ones that I gave you.
Okay, so Item 1 is about liens. How favored are you on liens? Those of you who sit here with a lien, it's unconstitutional.
No, speaking to the mic, Mr. Herman.
I am speaking directly to the people, we, the people, the voters who disagree with the liens. Boo!
Mr. Herman, do not yell into my microphone.
I'm not yelling at the mic.
Yes, you are. Don't do it again.
I'm amplifying the point. People disagree with the liens. Stop interrupting me, sir.
Stop his time. We have a translator. Every time you yell into the mic, it bothers their ears. You're not going to do it. I'm not going to let you do it. Now, you want to speak, speak, but I'm letting you know now. You're not going to be yelling and screaming into the microphone. Start his time. You do it again, you forfeit your time. Speak into the mic and stay on the item.
Okay, let me talk like a little boy now because.
I don't care, just speak into the item. You're not talking about the item.
I don't want to be too loud. Don't be sensitive to your hearing, big ears. But as you all know, that liens are unconstitutional, as Mr. Herman, the puppet, pointed out. He and Mr. B disagree with liens because they take our families out of our neighborhoods, as you heard John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, mention over and over. Now, Mr. Speaker, what item, other than the item you interrupted me on, am I on? Under the Ralph and Brown Act 54950.5? Okay, you don't remember?
No, I remember.
Do you remem-remember?
Okay, Mr. Herman, stick to the item, or you're going to go straight to a public comment.
What item am I on?
Okay, Mr., you know what? Go to his one minute for general public comment.
Fuck yeah! Vote no on Measure M. Vote no on HHH. Because how many homeless people have been on our street for years? And you want bonds and grants to take people off the streets? Look in your street today, all the people on the sidewalk and streets that are homeless, starting with veterans, Marines, the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, people living on the goddamn street, and you're voting today for what? Fuck you! That's my First Amendment and that's my opinion. Because nobody should live in the streets in Los Angeles any longer. Vote no on any measure, because if not, you're a part of the criminal harm all these poverty pimps brought against the American people. Fifth place loser, Englander, with the big ears, you know about it. Vote no for Janice Hahn, another poverty pimp. For the Sea of the Breeze, all those units, on behalf of public interest, First Amendment, fuck all of you!
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Okay, let's now vote on Items 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23. So on those items, on those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Now, let's vote on Items 27, 29, 30, 32, 33, 34, 35 and 36A. So let's open the roll. So let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, it's been a request to send item 35 urgent forthwith, so let's take a vote on that, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Coretts. Mr. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting, I'm warning you, you continue to do it, you'll be removed. Okay, we'll go to item 1, I have a card, Mr. Albert Odell, item 1, Mr. Albert Odell, please come forward. Mr. Odell? Oh, here he is.
Yes, this is Albert Odell.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm, I'm here to, I don't really know the procedure, but I had a broken window a number of years ago in my house, my single-family residence, it's been repaired, and I'm, I just spoke with the representative from Building and Safety, I guess he's going to continue it for two weeks so I can show proof of ownership.
Okay, why don't you give us the address?
4025 North Berry Nice Place.
Okay, if that's okay with Mr. Sadio, we'll continue that item for two weeks, which means it will return to this chamber's on November 22nd, so your item, sir, has been continued until that day.
November 22nd, at 10:00 AM, same time?
Yep, no, yes, 10:00 AM.
Thank you, sir.
Cynthia Hennessy? Cynthia Hennessy, Hennessy? So do we have Ms. Hennessy here? Could you wa- wave your hand, is that you in the back? I don't see Cynthia. Cynthia Hennessy, yeah, please come forward, if I call your name, come forward, and just state your name and the address.
Cynthia Hennessy, 9417 South LaSalle Avenue, Los Angeles, 90047.
Yes.
Yes, this property belongs to my elderly mother, who is 96 years old, she's lived on the property for 60 years, she suffers from physical disabilities as well as advanced dementia, there is a pool on the property, the pool is empty, my mother cannot swim, I arranged to put a fence, the Department of Building and Safety came out and requested that the pool be filled and repaired, at this point, it is a financial hardship, given my mother's position, for us to do so, I am asking that any penalties and interests be waived considering her age and her disabilities, and just allow me to fence it off.
And you're a full-time caregiver?
Yes, and I'm-
You have no job, you're going, you know.
Mr. Harris Dawson, what would you like to do?
Two weeks.
Okay, so what we'll do, Ms. Hennessy, is we'll continue your item for two weeks as well, give you an opportunity to speak to the staff, to see if you can work this out, so we'll hear your item on November 22nd as well, so, November 22nd.
Thank you.
Mireia Montenegro? Ms. Montenegro, please come forward.
My name is Mireia Montenegro.
My name is Mireia Montenegro.
I live on 9720 Foothill.
I live on 9720 Foothill.
In Silmar, California.
In Silmar, California.
91342.
91342. All the problems that I had is because I rented my house when I was ill with cancer. The people I rented the property used a trailer that they use as a storage. And they made a lot of irregularities.
And I fixed everything.
And I fixed everything?
I evicted them.
And I evicted them? And they didn't pay for eight months. And my house increased the value of $200,000. And I paid $2,200, and I have proofs. For my mortgage. I am in disability. And it is very difficult for me to pay.
Okay, Ms. Montenegro, I really want to help you, so what I'm going to ask you to do is go to my right, speak with Charles, if you could get with Vanessa from my office, let's see if we can't work this out for Ms. Montenegro, and I'm going to continue this item for 30 days, so this item will be back before this council December 7th, but I, what I'm hopeful is that we can work this out before then, okay? This is in Council District 7, and I am kind of looking out for that district, so I want to do what I can to help you, so if you would speak with the young lady in the red sweater, and Charles, Charles, if you join in, in that conversation, I would appreciate that, is that okay with you?
I really appreciate that, Mr. Judge, I really appreciate that.
It's, it's just Herb, okay, not Mr. Judge, but thank you.
Oh, Mr. Herb.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, my pleasure, okay, let's prepare to vote, let us open the roll. Okay, disregard that, we ready now, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Coretts. We're going to now go to item 2, um, wait a minute. Okay, Mr. Prentiss Jenkins, please come forward. Mr. Jenkins, one of your items was no public comment, on that it been satisfied, so you have one minute of public, of comment on this item 2, and then one minute for your public, general public comment, so come forward, sir, item number 2.
Prentiss Jenkins, publishes City Life newsletter activist since 1991, community activist, on the buyout of these, of these tenant buyouts, what type of buyouts are we talking about, hotels?
Item number 2, Mr. uh-
No, it was 5-2, correct?
Number 2.
Yes, 5 and 2, or number 2?
Number 2.
I'm, well, we'll have to put some time back on the clock, because I had 5-2 on there.
No, you have number 2.
Apparently, they put number 2 on there, but I had 5-2.
You want to go to your general public comment, then?
Yes, let's go to the general public comment.
Okay, let's give him his minute for general public comment, go ahead, sir.
I am an activist, I've been an activist since 1991, I was responsible for opening this current price, or Council price, creating a free food bank for individuals in the community, and creating a free computer training program for at-risk youth back in the 90s, we got 1,000 people jobs in the construction industry, African-Americans who couldn't get jobs, my program now is something called Peace Between Residents and Police, and we need to get everybody involved in that, because what happened in Louisiana and Dallas could come here, and we could see that on the 6 o'clock news, Los Angeles police officers ambushed, so I want everyone to go to my GoFundMe page, you just put my name in there, Prentiss Jenkins, P-R-E-N-T-I-S-S, J-N-K-I-N-S, Google that, go to my GoFundMe page, and donate, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peirman, Donna Peirman, on item 2, and your general public comment, come on, Donna.
Thanks to the stupid lady back there who didn't tell me how to vote, put on down on number 1, thanks a lot, all she said is touch public comment.
Just stay on, uh-
Okay, we got over here, we got number 2, we got, again, dislike number 1, who only cares about politicians, over here with all this number as $24 million for a 76 senior multifamily residential project, which probably has most of the rents very high, so that people, they only really help out the rich people, like number 1, as I said, we get knocked down, we get up again, no one's going to keep us down, yes, because Paula tries to try to keep us down by having these huge developers, because that's all they care about, is huge developers, they don't care about the people, and just like number 1.
Okay, Madam Clerk, give her her general public comment minute.
Okay, my general public comment, please vote yes on 51 to 55, 56, 59, no, vote yes on number 60, no on 61 to 65, yes on 66, no on 67, vote no on the county school bonds, vote no on the city issues, especially vote no on H and M, last chance to vote for Donald Trump, bring back, bring back jobs, help the economy grow, and lower your federal taxes, so if Hillary wins, we're going to be leaving Israel, so this is giving the chance, people don't trust Hillary, Donald Trump is the one that will bring back Los Angeles, he will bring jobs to Los Angeles so we won't have such a huge unemployment numbers, so that we won't have such a huge number of homeless, because there'll be opportunities for people, so, I'm, I'm all in red, because I'm going to vote Republican, vote for Donald Trump!
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Peirman, okay, now let's vote on item 2, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, I'd like to call some other speakers to do general public comment, I'd like to call Jacqueline Richardson, are you here, Ember Knight, Leah Renee, Kevin Kelly, please come forward, come on, if I called your name, please come forward, you don't have to wait in any order, just please come forward, if I called your name, Ms. Richardson, I know it's you, yes.
The landlord rang the front doorbell, he said, money, honey, if you want to get along with me, this should apply to the people on Skid Row sleeping in the brand-new tents on the sidewalk, packed in there like sardines, the money designated for them went to the white area where they don't sleep in tents, that money needs to be sent back right now to the black area, so the landlord can tell those people, money, honey, if you want to get along with me, they need to get out of those tents and, housing, because the money's there for them, so the landlord can tell them, money, honey, if you want to get along with me.
Thank you, and you are?
I'm Kevin Kelly.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, welcome, sir.
President Weston, members of your board, I come today, in stark contrast to many of the other speakers, to praise you, I'm from the Imperial Irrigation District in southernmost Southern California, and we have a body of water there that you may be familiar with, the Salton Sea, in September, your council passed a resolution to move toward 100% renewable energy, I want to commend that action, and I want to suggest to you that one of the best ways, if you're searching for partnerships going forward, in concert with your Department of Water and Power, is to forge a partnership with our irrigation district at the Salton Sea for geothermal energy, because the largest untapped reserve of geothermal energy, can I go just a little longer?
No, I'm so sorry, if I let you go, I have to let others go, but thank you for coming, sir, I need James Merez, or Ember Knight, Leah Renee, yes, identify yourself.
Council members, citizens, friends, good morning, my name is Ember Knight, and I'm running for King of LA, this may not be a real position, but I'm not going to let that stop me, I believe that parking in Los Angeles should be free, I'm not sure how to make this happen, but I believe that if it's a reality we want, it's a reality we can have, I'm only 24 years old, and I'm willing to be very annoying about this for a long time, thank you so much for your time, and God bless the city of LA.
Thank you, Ms. Renee, and James Merez, James Merez, please come forward, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Leah Renee, I'd like to address the fact of what's going on-
Wait a minute, shh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Renee.
General public comment, correct? I'm here to bring your attention to what's happening at Pacific Palisades Bluffs at 16321 Pacific Coast Highway, they have, they've excavating the bluff, it's a 45, almost a 40-foot cut with no permits, no geotechnical report, your, your Public Works Department says it's an active landslide and that it's moving, and you've allowed the hill to be cut for about 700 feet long, and I brought it to Councilmember Bond's attention, I brought it to Debbie Dunner Harris's attention, they said it's not under your jurisdiction, but it is, and it looks like you're trying to create a safe harbor under the Haggis lawsuit, and also in Locke and Cheetah, and, you know, you don't have immunity if people die, you don't have discretion to do this, and you're going after people with Building and Safety, little things like their cars and their trucks and their driveway, but here's somebody excavating the whole Pacific Palisades Bluff, and you're not collecting taxes, you're not collecting permit fees.
Thank you, thank you, so if I can get Mr. Merez, followed by Margaret Malloy, yes, sir.
Hi, James Merez, Mike, I hope you got your ears open, so recently, council passed a motion that was going to allow people to sleep in their cars overnight, in commercial and industrially-zoned properties, I'm from the Venice area, and in Venice, there's a lot of commercially-zoned properties that have been converted to residential spaces legally by permit, and that's going to have a huge impact on a lot of streets, if all of a sudden these residential streets, which the intent is not in residential neighborhoods, but if residential streets can all of a sudden have overnight parking, please reconsider that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy.
Hello, you all, it's Election Day 2016, it's contentious, the principle of the election is one person, one vote, equal weight to that vote, we're looking at the Venice bid, it's an unequal vote. It's an unequal vote. It's a weighted vote. If it were not for City of Los Angeles participation, at a, at a price of almost a half million dollars, the next vote is $98,000. That is not the principle of the state act, which allows private businesses and property owners to create a business improvement district. We are going to hear from that bid, but in the meanwhile, IT companies in Venice enjoy 80% business tax break. Snapchat is launching an IPO in March, expected to be valued at $4 billion. We have money for services. We have unequal representation. We have unfair taxation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That, that concludes general public comment. We'll go to item 14. Okay, we're going to go to item 14. I have cards, and again, let me state, Mr. City Attorney, uh, we are, we have concluded the general public comment. Okay, so I need Steve Nakata, James Schuer, Lawrence Edgar, please come forward, Elizabeth Solo, Harrell Simon, please come forward.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers come forward, amending motion 14A has been posted and circulated for consideration.
And, and also, um...
Yes.
Mr. President, council members should be reminded that this is a fair hearing matter, requiring heightened awareness to the speaker at the podium or at their monitors at your desks. Bye.
Okay, so let's start off. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Yes. Honorable President Wesson and honorable council members, my name is Steve Nakata of Nakata and Associates. I just want to emphasize that the project at 11600 Dunston Way has been designed and engineered and compliant with all zoning and, uh, Building Department regulations. Uh, so I ask that you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Could I have the next speaker, please come forward and identify yourself?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Jim Surr. I am the project manager for the developers of the 11600 Dunston Way project. Uh, we have, with the cooperation of Mr. Bonin's staff, met with many of the neighbors and have, uh, worked out collaboratively a set of conditions that we believe will allow the excavation and hauling of the dirt required to be conducted safely and to minimize impacts to all of the neighbors. We support the revised conditions, and we would request that the City Council deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please come forward and identify yourself.
My name is Elizabeth Assunso. I am an original owner of a condominium at 514 South Barrington Avenue, which is just west of this proposed development. I have lived there for 30 years, and my, my particular unit is right adjacent to this, the property line of, of the developed, proposed development. I am in favor of this development for a number of reasons, including major improvements to Dunston Way, improved aesthetics, and improved property values. I participated in the, the latest truck haul discussion with the developers and members of the Brentwood Homeowners Association, and I am satisfied that the safety of vehicles, pedestrians, and pets is not only well-provided for, but the presence of four flagmen on Dunston means that Dunston will be the safest it has ever been in 30 years. And in those 30 years, to my knowledge, there have been no...
Thank you, ma'am. If I could get the next speaker, please, identify yourself.
Uh, hello, my name is Lawrence Edgar. I own a condominium unit at 530 South Barrington Avenue, adjacent to this proposed project. I oppose the proposal for two reasons, safety and congestion. The neighborhood would be less safe both during the construction process and afterwards if the project is approved. During construction, the cement trucks would block the path of ambulances in the event of an emergency in my building and in an adjacent building. Afterward, there could be more car accidents from left turns onto Barrington Avenue from Dunston Way from the new residents. Also, Barrington Avenue is the only artery in Los Angeles between Wilshire and Sunset Boulevard, it's west of the 405. It is already congested. It would become much more so if this project were to be approved. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, uh, Mr. President, honorable members. My name is Harrell Simon, and I'm the appellant. Uh, behind me, there are 100 petition signatures and over 3,000 homeowners represented by the Brentwood Homeowners Association who are, uh, supporting this appeal. I wanted to ask you a question. One day, we will open the newspaper, and we'll read a story. We'll read a story about a tragic accident on Dunston Way, and this report will expose that a developer, uh, submitted a permit for building, uh, uh, under a false address and kept it there for three years. We will then read that he was violating the laws of posting and mailing and kept it hidden for the public for such a long time, risking the lives of elderly and disabled on a street without a sidewalk, all this without a proper environmental report. I don't want to be part of this story. I don't think you want your names attached to this story. Please read the evidence before you vote. Thank you very much.
Okay. Please come forward. Are you, uh, Sarah or Sarie?
Sarie.
Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Sarie Teshar.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. President and honorable City Council members. I oppose the development and support the appeal at 11600 Dunston Way. The neg, mitigated negative declaration is glaringly incomplete and inadequate. It does not thoroughly or properly address issues requiring mitigation. For example, the MND clearly states that the air quality and the health impact exceeds acceptable allowable state limits. There is not adequate mitigation in place to properly ameliorate these serious issues, yet it was approved as mitigated. It would be irresponsible to allow this project to slip through the cracks without first at least requiring the developer to do a full environmental impact report. I implore you to consider the health impact and safety of the residents of the community before you each place your vote. I was also in the meeting that Mrs. Insuelo referred to, and I do not agree with the statement she made, and I do not agree with the terms that they, that we all discussed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bonin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, could I ask the City Attorney to come up for a couple of quick questions on this one? Well, while staff is taking a seat, just for context, uh, this is a, uh, residential development in my district in Brentwood, uh, on Dunston Way, which is a, a narrow one-way street. Um, a haul route was approved for this project, uh, in Plum a couple of weeks ago. Uh, last week, week and a half ago, I was, uh, holding office hours at the Brentwood Farmers Market, and the appellant, uh, Dr. Simon and a few others came to speak to me about this and raised a couple of issues, um, that I just wanted to, to get on the record and, and ask you about, because I took their, their concerns very seriously. Uh, the first question was their contention that the address of the project, uh, was listed incorrectly, uh, for a long time at the beginning of this project, and actually listed an address that is non-existent. Um, what does that do to the legitimacy of the haul route and the process in our vote today?
Agent Corisoni, City Attorney's Office. Um, I think Building and Safety might also be in the audience, but my understanding is that, uh, the application for the building permit initially had the incorrect address, and it was corrected, and, um, pursuant to the hearing on the haul route and all the proceedings that have led up to this, all the notices included the, uh, correct address. So that, Building and Safety might be able to confirm that, but that's my understanding of the, the facts.
Okay. Is Building and Safety here to confirm that? Come on up, Building and Safety. Good morning.
Good morning. Cor Johnson, Board Secretary for Building and Safety Commission. Yes, the haul route was addressed correctly with the Dunston address.
The, so the haul route, the, the issue before us today, the haul route, was addressed correctly throughout the process?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, so, um, there was another question raised about, uh, the, the easement that exists, uh, for Dunston Way, and some people have contended that that does not allow a haul route on it. Can someone speak to that?
Are you referring to the fact that it's a private street?
Yes.
So, um, the assessment done by Building and Safety and everything that was analyzed for the haul route looked at the ability to move the trucks and doesn't really reach the issue of whether or not, I think the way that the issue was framed, as I understand it, was whether that owner was using up more capacity than he had the right to under the easement. But it's a private street, and that's really a private matter among those owners. It's not an issue that the city looks at when it just looks at whether or not this is an appropriate route for the hauling of earth.
So that's a private right of action matter?
Right.
Okay. Uh, the, uh, the, the final question I had was, the, the project itself, uh, is separate from the haul route. The project itself is not a discretionary matter for the city. Uh, it's, it's building according to zoning, and it's a by-right project?
Correct.
So there is only one way in and out of the, the project. It's at the end of a dead end. Uh, so, um, if we were to deny the haul route, what would be the legal implications for the city, given there's no other way in and out?
Without, without doing additional analysis, I think the most, um, obvious things that we would look into, whether or not they are in fact issues that, that would present a challenge, um, would be whether there's a taking, uh, whether there are other viable alternatives. We just have to look at those general areas of law that we've looked at.
So effectively, we have to grant some sort of haul route, uh, because we, otherwise we'd be denying the project illegally?
It's, it's possible, yeah. There, with proper conditions, yes.
Okay, all right. Um, given that, um, the Brentwood Homeowners Association, which was previously, um, supportive of the appeal, met with the applicant and negotiated significant changes into the haul route, an increase in the number of, uh, flagmen to five, a change in the haul route in the direction to keep it off Sunset. Um, given everything we've just said and given those, uh, negotiations and recommendations that the Brentwood Homeowners Association is asking for, colleagues have circulated an amending motion, item 14A, uh, which, uh, changes the haul route and conditions it differently than was in Plum, um, in, in terms of the size of the trucks, the number of the trucks, uh, the number of flag attendants, uh, and, uh, staggered route, uh, as well as redirecting the traffic, uh, away from Sunset and, and going south. So, uh, with that, I'd ask for approval of amending item 14A, uh, which would, uh, deny the appeal and grant the haul route. Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, prepare to vote on this item. If we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you.
And that's as amended.
Okay, so what we're going to do now, Madam Clerk, we're going to, we're going to deal with items 10 and 8. We'll take item 10 first. The, uh, public comment on item 10 has been satisfied, so members, we can just vote on that. That's item 10. Let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
All right. Now, it's my understanding there...
And that, excuse me, Mr. President, that ordinance will be held over until November 22nd.
This was second reading, so we're good then, right?
That's correct. The ordinance is adopted. This was the second consideration.
Okay, so now we're going to go to item 8, and I have, uh, a few speakers on that item. Yolanda Aldaz, David Sparer, Chris Barone, Matt Meehan, come forward.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers come forward, there have been motions 8A, 8B, and 8C have all been posted and circulated for consideration.
Morning, honorable council members. My name is Yolanda Aldaz. I'm the PR and Community Outreach for D.C. Collective. We are also members of the UCBA, and I'm actually here this morning to thank you so very much for taking Prop D shops into consideration as you write this ordinance. I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. I shouldn't be, but I'm really excited because we finally were able to get our pink BTRC, and I know that I'm going to be able to be part of our community for a long time to come. We're going to be able to continue to provide monthly donations to the West Valley Food Pantry, continue to help the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, and it's been such an honor to learn how this whole political process works. It's been definitely hard for everyone, but I just want to thank you for allowing our, our Prop D compliant shops to be able to continue to be in business, to continue to hire the people that we hire, to be able to give jobs to the people that live in our community, to be able to continue to work closely with law enforcement, and appreciate it again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and good to see you again. Next?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Chris Barone, and I represent, uh, manufacturers of cannabis products here in California, uh, and specifically Los Angeles, and, uh, we're just, um, in support of CTRA and, you know, responsible taxation and regulation of, um, dispensaries, manufacturing, distribution, and other related, um, aspects of, of this industry, and just, uh, here to support the, uh, We Are LA movement and what we've been doing. So thank you.
Yes, just come forward and identify yourself.
I'm Matt Meehan. Uh, good morning. I stand in support of the, uh, Southern California Coalition as well. I believe it is the smart move for Los Angeles, um, if they want regulated, uh, licensed shops only, then they will open it up to reasonable licensure. Um, this will include the Prop D shops, but it will open it up to a reasonable amount of shops in the city, and that will, um, deter the black market. So I stand with the Southern Cali, California Coalition and reasonable regulation for marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. So David, and after David, if I could get Jared Kilo and Daniel Sosa.
Good morning. Uh, my name is David Sparer, and, uh, I represent, uh, cannabis manufacturers in Los Angeles, as well as being a member of the California Minority Alliance and the, and the, um, the Cultivators Alliance in support of responsible, uh, regulation and licensure for the cannabis business in Los Angeles. We currently operate in this, in the city and, uh, employ about 18 people with an average salary of $40 an hour, uh, and we want to continue doing so in Los Angeles. So please provide licensing for our business with responsible taxation and legislation for us, um, and include a minority equity stake in that as well, to make sure that the population of the county, uh, of the city, excuse me, is properly represented in this industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Jared, come on forward. Yes, sir.
My name is Jared Kilo. I'm the president of the UCBA. I want to, I want to thank the council for this perfect marriage between industry leaders and the government, showing us how that we can work together to get a fully licensed and regulated industry. I appreciate the council taking into account, uh, the Prop D shops and giving some level of priority to us when it comes to licensing. I feel like this is a good foundation for our industry, to show that the legally operating shops that are paying taxes and that have roots in our community, that you continue to support us as we support the government, as we move forward with all the regulations and taxation that have been proposed, um, by this March ballot initiative. Um, I appreciate this opportunity, and, uh, especially, um, Mr. Wesson's office for having direct communication with us in this, uh, in this movement forward with better language, um, so that we can all feel supported, not only, um, in a communicative kind of way, but also in a legislative way. So very much appreciated. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you, man. Okay, so if I get Daniel Sosa, followed by Ms. Peirman. Donna, move your way over now. Yes, sir.
Good morning, council. I'm a, a member of GLACA, the Greater Los Angeles Collectives Alliance, which represents the Prop D collectives in Los Angeles, and GLACA is a part of the Southern California Coalition. Um, I just want to thank you guys for giving consideration to the Prop D shops. Um, that, that really makes the most... That really makes the most sense to give us priority licensing. I know you guys reached out to the community yesterday to try to figure out some qualifiers, to kind of figure out who bad actors are, and I think it's just really difficult to figure out objective qualifiers beyond like the BTRCs, the LiveScans, and your 135 list. And also, just, I think at this point, the Prop D operators have either been in business in the city for 10-plus years, or they're new investors into the industry, and I can't speak for everyone, but I think that for the most part, the Prop D operators are good actors. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Peirman.
Yeah, I hope they also tax the illegal vendors while they're at it, but what people don't seem to realize that the ones that are actually paying, it's not these little places with the marijuana shops. They're gonna bring it over to the people who are buying the marijuana, and they're gonna not make it so that anybody that actually has any medical reason, and not just these people that got them, you know, with going in with a backache, you know, but the people who actually need them are gonna have a hard time getting these, the marijuana, 'cause they're gonna cost, do the cost back onto the people so that they can't have their little $10 worth of small amount for their huge amount like cancer and, like people like, you know, Rosendahl. So, anyway, but I'm good to see that you are trying to keep them in, and maybe they won't be all over the place, which we don't want them all over the place, so.
Thank you. Okay, let's, let me check with the city clerk. I think we have four votes.
That is correct.
Okay, why don't you walk us through these votes? First vote.
The first vote is on 8A, and it is whether to substitute.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And now, we're voting on to approve?
Correct. Whether to approve motion 8A.
Now, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Continue.
And then, 8B is before council, and the recommendation is to receive and file that.
On this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And now, 8C, I believe.
Yes, and 8C is an amending motion of 8A.
All right. So, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, on this item, so that's, in fact, let me wait until you tell me the vote.
And that is adopted as amended.
All right, thank you. So, anyway, I do too wanna thank everybody for coming in, talking about this item. I think it was a process that had integrity, so I thank you all. You know, we'll be continuing this conversation. We have another hearing on this item, the 29th of November at City Hall, and then December, December 7th, we'll be in Van Nuys City Hall. So, again, thank you all for your participation, and the conversation continues. Okay, we're gonna now go to item 11. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, I called this item special because although public comment had been satisfied in committee, there are a number of speakers here who would like to address this matter, and if it's okay, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that they be given the opportunity to present comment as well.
Okay, why don't we start off with, let's just say, 10 minutes, and then we'll take it from there?
I don't know how many cards there are, Mr. President, but whatever is your, whatever is your pleasure.
Okay. Let's start that way. Okay, so, Bill, Preslucky, Walt, Center Fit, Deborah Roventina, Carol Centroni, and Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a reminder to the council members that this is a fair hearing matter requiring the council members' heightened attention to the speaker at the podium or to their monitors at their desks.
And, Mr. President, along those lines, there are a number of people who are exiting the chamber. I'd ask that they exit quietly so that the members of the public who are speaking can be heard, please.
Okay, why don't we wait a second, let it clear out a little bit? Because we do wanna hear, hear you all. Okay, why don't we try it?
Okay, my name is Bill Preslucky. I'm the executive director of Power People Organized for West Side Renewal. On number 11, this is a small lot subdivision that would replace nine existing RSO units, some with rents as low as $440, $575 a month, in favor of 26 small lot homes that would sell upwards of $800,000 each. And this is another example of us losing valuable and irreplaceable RSO housing stock to much higher rate development. We ask you to carefully consider the appeal, granting the appeal, and working to preserve our valuable RSO housing stock. We don't work directly with this group, so the specifics of the issue, you'll hear from folks more closely related to the project, but it's clear that we need to save our RSO housing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, if I can, if I called your name, just come on up. Don't be shy. Just come on up and identify yourself. Then, I'm looking for a Jen, Donna G. So, it doesn't have to be in order. Guys, you're gonna forfeit your time. I'm trying to get everybody up. I'm trying to get everybody up.
My name's Walt Center Fit, 2427 Michigan Avenue, L.A. 90033. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Tenants Union, a tenant-led, all-volunteer movement across the city of tenants fighting to maintain, preserve, and defend affordable housing, as well as get more of it. This is an issue where we're, we're supporting the appeal to reject the submitted mitigated negative development declaration and send it back for more work. For, there are, the reasons are specified in the appeal very clearly about the ways in which it has not complied with SEQA, but more importantly, this is an opportunity for you to use the law to strike a blow for the larger issue of defending affordable housing and not rewarding efforts which clearly demolish without replacement and without mitigation. Use the law, even if it's a technicality, to strike a blow for housing justice.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, if I can get Deborah, Carol, Jen, Donna, Donna G., Nelson Pichardo, Sylvie Shane, Brittany, Chris Seller, so just, just come on up, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Nelson Pichardo. Thank you so much for letting us speak today. Thank you, Councilmember Krikorian, for making this possible. Thank you so much. I represent the Office of Assemblywoman Patty Lopez, District 39. I must disclose that the issue at hand, the actual geographic location, doesn't fall on District 39. However, thanks to Assemblywoman Nasari, and he graciously allowed us to advocate for this group. Now, we're here because this group actually came to our office, okay, and they presented document upon document, some as much as 170 pages worth of documents, expressing their frustration of how they felt the process has not been helping them in expressing their need against this project development. And they cited pages and pages of possible illegal actions, all the way down from their local city council, to how they haven't been able to speak properly. And I must say, I can share their frustration. This is the third time I've had to come.
Thank you. Nelson, thank you, and good luck today. If I could add the next, next speaker, please just come up and identify yourself.
Hello, my name's Deborah Roventina, and I'm in Councilman Krikorian's district. Thank you, Councilman Krikorian, for making this a special assignment today. I'm here because I live in NoHo Arts District, and there's a lot of destruction going on. If we lose this property, we lose not only rent stabilized housing, but we lose environment, and we lose, our, our area has been impacted more and more and more with more and more people and housing development tearing down all the rent-controlled places. And I see who we're up against has been illegally evicting the disabled, plagiarizing, falsifying reports, suing two elderly women who grabbed the property. Today, on my way here, I was standing on the corner, and a little lady's street sweeper said to me, "Oh, you smell goo..." Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm looking for Stephen Bowers, Mark Simon, Lisa Pastor, George Abrams. So, I call your name, just get in line. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Donna G., and I am asking you to reject this development for three reasons. First of all, the project does not fit into the neighborhood. Secondly, we have questionable activities by the development company. And third of all, we have the destruction of a public street that we have been paying taxes on for over 30 years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, and again, Mickey Jackson and Ann. Yes, identify yourself.
Sylvie Shane, I provided a statement that is in blue. I ask that you please refer to it. It has the entirety of my SEQA argument for the failure of this project to mitigate the impact with regards to the loss of rent stabilized and affordable housing. First of all, the environmental assessment form has misleading information. There were three units that, per the SEQA, L.A. SEQA's screening criteria, would result in the net loss of existing housing units affordable to very low-income households, and that would require mitigation. Furthermore, the city's contention is that the project doesn't have significant impacts because a 35-unit apartment building could be built there by right. However, a 35-unit apartment building would then be subject to the RSO per the restrictions when a property has been elisted, and so that would be, that would offer more mitigation than this discretionary project. There's a failure to identify cumulative impacts. There's more than 25 units within 300 feet that are being taken away.
Thank you. If I could have the next speaker come?
Thank you, council members. I'm Chris Quayar with the L.A. Tenants Union. We have information that the Urban Blocks is a speculative developer that are not actually building anything, they're simply getting the entitlements and demolishing existing housing in order to cash in on selling the entitlements. This is what is causing the housing crisis, speculative development. We cannot lose any more rent stabilized housing. RSO is gold. Please do not exacerbate the housing crisis by letting this development, project go through. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Carol Centroni. So, here we are on Election Day, where members of this council have authored a measure to ask citizens of L.A. to indebted ourselves to a $2 billion bond to house and care for a small fraction of our nearly 47,000 homeless population. But how ironic, how hypocritical, that here in L.A., shamefully dubbed "the homeless capital of the United States," we have the same legislative body continue to approve these types of projects, projects which literally remove rent stabilized units from our housing stock, demolish those irreplaceable and affordable RSO units, and throw those tenants out into the proverbial streets, all in order to continue the momentum towards unaffordability and more luxury housing. Shame on any of you who rubber-stamped this development at the expense of the community surrounding it. Sorry?
No, I was just listening.
Oh, okay. In order to, at the expense of the community that surrounds it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on, George.
Yeah, George Abraham. This developer has lied under penalty of perjury on his master land use application. He does not own or lease this land. First, his LLC is not registered in California, and real estate transactions are not valid. Second, there's a list pendants clouding the title to one of the lots. The city should not be taking sides in a legal dispute, and if they approve this tentative tract, that's exactly what they'll be doing. They should wait until the issue has been resolved as to who is the rightful owner of that land. Further, he's filed a lawsuit to bully the owners, elderly 80-year-old people, into signing an agreement with them, and he's had his lawyer send letters to a community group threatening them with libel to attract truthful statements made about him. And this issue should be referred to the district attorney for prosecution for his lying under penalty of perjury, and this dirtbag developer certainly deserves to be prosecuted.
Okay, next, identify.
Hello, my name is Brittany Chanel. I'm an LMU graduate student, and I'm currently making a film about the affordable housing crisis here in L.A., which is why I'm here. One of the things about this case that alarms me of many is the fact that the owners are in their 80s, and in a deposition, they said that they don't even know who Urban Blocks is. They repeatedly said that they have never heard of Urban Blocks. They never signed an agreement to sell their property, nor have they authorized anyone to do so. I think it's interesting that today is Voting Day, and in Santa Monica, they're voting on a proposition to where they will get a chance to vote on certain development projects, and maybe that's something that needs to happen here. Therefore, I urge the council members to side with the community and not the developers on this case. Thank you so much.
Okay, next.
Good morning, council members. My name is Jen. Councilman Sadio, you have been an advocate for preservation of low-income housing. The proposal before you seeks to demolish existing RSO units that result in permanent loss of the city's affordable housing stock. Councilmember Krikorian, you have signed motions supporting the facts that small lot subdivisions cause damage to existing neighborhoods and do not relate well to the street. In this case, the proposal seeks to relinquish our street rather than to conform to it as a surround, surrounding area. Councilmember Blumenfield, you have been an advocate for what you describe as key quality of life issues, including public safety, emergency preparedness, and beautification. The proposal before you reduces emergency response times to what is already reduced to less than safe, overdensifies our cul-de-sac. These findings exist in the record. Councilmember Ru, you were elected because of your adamant to support the community and respond to their needs.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members.
Morning.
My name is Anne Harz. I'm an artist, and I put balloons on rent stabilized homes slated for demolition so that developers can build luxury developments in their place. I am very, very busy, especially in Valley Village. This Election Day, you wanna build $1.2 billion worth of housing for the homeless, yet your policies of not holding developers accountable by using the tools you already have, MNDs, SEQA, are creating homelessness every day. I think the appeals process needs to be looked at very carefully. I think this appeals process for this particular development was not handled well, and I think that you, it would be a vote for affordable housing in this city if you looked at this case and very, very carefully. I appreciate your time on this matter. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Hi, Mark Simon, the Los Angeles Tenants Union. I just wanted to say once again that this is an opportunity for the city council to use the law to support keeping the reduction, keeping from reducing the number of affordable housing units. Building our way out of it is only half the battle. Another significant part is preserving affordable housing, and we're gonna be losing, in this instance alone, houses that sold, that were renting, apartments that rented for $440 or $575. These are gonna be turned into luxury condos, small homes that will be selling for $800,000. We can't just build our way out of this. We have got to preserve the affordable housing that's there. That is a significant part of this battle to, to keep the city into, in some sort of livable state. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Elisa Pastor. I'm an attorney with Glazer Weil, and I'm here today representing the applicant UV Valley Village. I urge you to please deny the appeal and uphold the approval of this vesting tentative tract map. That's what we're here about today. This was approved by these, by the advisory agency in two hearings in the APC. The appeal was denied, and the appeal was denied at Plum. I can assure you that my client is either the owner of the property involved... I can assure you that my client is either the owner of the property involved in this or has a purchase agreement from, to buy the two other parcels. We've submitted to council from the owners of the property affirmations that they did agree to allow our client to submit the application. It's on the land use form, and then we also submitted two affidavits very recently where they reaffirm that. We're happy to answer any questions here, and I appreciate your support.
Great. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Stephen Bowers, and I'm the last remaining tenant on a RSO property. I'm following up on Sylvie Shane's fair argument of significant impact. The housing element and even the city's CEQA guidelines emphasize as a policy imperative that the need to preserve and/or replace existable affordable housing options. One way to achieve this goal with this project is to require the following mitigation measures as conditions of approval. One, compel the project applicant to set aside units available for purchase by low-income individuals to compensate for the loss of nine RSO units. This could be made possible through HUD subsidized lending programs made available to qualifying individuals if the units are made available for purchase at reduced prices closer to $300,000. Number two, compensate the displaced tenants at amounts that exceed statutory requirements that are commensurate with the difference between the exceptionally below-market rents that were in effect at the time and current market rates for comparable units. Thank you very much.
Miki Jackson with the Coalition to Preserve L.A. This is an advertisement for the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative that will be on the March ballot. You are inserting yourselves improperly into an unresolved legal matter. You are jumping the gun. You are going too fast. You are greasing the skids of this project before many very key legal issues, such as ownership, have been decided. People who are paid by people come here, and they assure you, and they tell you things, and this would not be the first time they told you something that wasn't accurate. George Abrams outlined these problems very well. You are putting yourself, and you are putting the city, and you are putting me and all the other taxpayers in harm's way by inserting yourself improperly into a legal matter. The title is clouded. You need to slow down, take a longer look, and really be careful.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, colleagues, that concludes all the speaker cards. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like the city attorney to come to the table, please.
And I'd like to ask, Mr. President, that Mr. Herman be asked not to disturb the meeting, please, as we're trying to debate this issue.
Yes, Mr. Herman, if you wave your arms again or make animal noises, that'll be your last warning. We're going to ask you to step out. And if you brought any props, you need to keep them down and not wave them around because it's disturbing the people in the back.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'd like to start first with the issues that were raised by the public relating to the impact on current tenants of the existing RSO building on this lot. And I'd like to ask, first of all, what the status of that has been, what the status of the tenants in that current building is, and what the impact of the Ellis Act has on their status.
Adrian Horasani, City Attorney's Office. We wouldn't be able to speak to the current status of the tenants. We do know how the application was filed and that it was with the authorization of the owners to file for the map. We can speak to the potential impacts that were discussed, and I'll let my colleague Kathy Phelan explain the CEQA impacts.
Sure. And specifically, as you responded to that, there were a couple of references to the fact that with the application of the Ellis Act, that if there were a new apartment building built instead of what the applicants are proposing, what would be the RSO impact of that?
So, well, first, as to the arguments related to the Ellis Act, and the matter before you is a tract map and the CEQA finding. So if you have to comply with the Ellis Act, you have to comply with the Ellis Act. It wouldn't affect the tract map findings, and that wouldn't inform your tract map findings either. As to the CEQA, the Ellis Act on its own doesn't inform the CEQA analysis. CEQA analysis is whether or not you have a physical impact to the property. If there's a loss of affordable housing, loss of affordable housing on its own is a social-economic impact. That's not a CEQA impact. It is only a CEQA impact if it will result in a physical impact. So if someone provides evidence that that loss of affordable housing will displace so many low-income tenants that they, that new housing will have to be built somewhere else, that would be the CEQA impact. And staff is recommending that they don't, they have not found that evidence for the CEQA analysis.
Okay. So if there were violation of the Ellis Act by the owner of this property, there would be remedies that would be available, presumably, but what you're advising us is that those remedies don't impact what is on the agenda to be voted upon today.
That's correct. What's on the agenda today is the map, the appeal of the map, and the CEQA supporting the decision on the map.
And conversely, if, whatever the action of the council is today on the tract map, that will not impact on the availability of the remedies that the tenants would have under the Ellis-
Correct. That does not preclude the application of the law.
So either way, unrelated issues. Okay. Now, the appellant's discussed in their papers, as well as to an extent today, whether the proposal is consistent with the general plan, the community and specific plan, and, as one speaker said, whether it fits into the neighborhood. Can you talk about those issues as they relate to the tract map approval?
So for purpose of the tract map, conformity to a plan relates to cutting up those lots in the size and allowing the density that will be allowed. The fact that this property is zoned for this density really speaks to whether or not it's consistent. If there's a concern about design or something like that, that's not a tract map issue. It's really about, are you cutting up those lots consistent with the allowed density in the plan? And staff has recommended that, yes, it is consistent because the zoning allows this density.
Okay. So regardless of aesthetics or anything else, the issue is on the density, it is consistent with the community plan, with the general plan, and the Valley Village specific plan?
Correct.
Okay. Now, there were a number of issues raised with regard to the title, and, as I understand it, that is currently actually subject to litigation. And I'd like to ask how that impacts, how the pendency of that litigation impacts on our ability to adopt findings or to make, to take a vote on the tract map application.
So the council is acting on the application as processed by planning pursuant to their confirmation of the ownership based on the documents they received, and I think they also confirm that with the county recorder's office. If a court finds that there was an issue with the ownership, then permits wouldn't be able to be pulled. I mean, that would be something that would affect the development of the project. But for your purposes today, and planning is here to explain their process as well, but for purposes of this appeal, it is looking at the decision and the recommendation that was made on the map by the planning department.
Actually, I think I would like to address that to planning as well, please. So again, the issue that I was raising was the pendency of the current litigation regarding title on the property. How does that impact the entitlement process that your department has to go through? And can you tell us, you know, specifically, the current title holder, what the position of the current title holder is, and how that impacts on your decision-making?
Council members, my name is Kevin Jones. I'm a senior city planner in the planning department in the Valley Project Planning Section. Mark Borishing and I worked together with this project. To answer your questions, what we base our information on is the master land use permit application, which was filed in 2015. The document requires information about ownership, and what we do is that we look at the current owners, or we establish ownership based upon the zoning information in map access system, which refers to information that is supplied by the county recorder's office. What was supplied at that time and what is currently listed are two owners for the property that is to the north of Weddington. What that document also has on there are recorded grant deeds for other parcels, the two other parcels that were purchased by the UB, the UB-
Valley Village.
-Valley Village Trust, and that's an LLC. Our documents indicate that there is a document, an owner's and beneficiary statement signed by the owners of the two northern properties. One is a Marta Lathrup, and the other one is by a Sidney Edwards. It is a, they are both notarized documents done on different days. But the information that is contained in here indicates that, that they agree that UB Valley Village LLC, the owner in escrow, is permitted and allowed to file for a small-lot subdivision for the aforementioned property, their property as described in the legal description. Furthermore, the UB Valley Village LLC is responsible for all city fees related to the filing of the subdivision case for the project. So this is the information that was considered. It was found to be adequate for continuing the process of the subdivision case to create the small-lot subdivision of the single-family homes.
And so if something did proceed, if they are currently in litigation, a court would likely explain to us what the remedy is, and, as I mentioned earlier, they wouldn't be able to develop the project going forward if a court found that there was an inherent problem in the title. At this point, the city hasn't been enjoined from actually taking an action on what's before us today, which is completing the decision on the appeal.
So if the current title holder seller and the potential purchaser of the property are pursuing the application, and let's say we move forward today and approve that and deny the appeal, at some point, before any construction were to begin, there would have to be an additional application process for that, and at any point, a court could enjoin' that process if a third party who claimed entitlement to that property, claimed a right in that property, the third, a court could enjoin' anything from going forward.
That's right.
Now, what if it went the other way, and we said, "Well, there may be a cloud on the title. Some third party is claiming that they may or may not have an interest or a first right of refusal or something in this property, so we're going to deny the application until that's resolved." What would be the impact of that?
So again, our analysis would have to be looking at the facts. Are we going to be facing an issue with taking? What evidence do we have? I think that we'd have to do that analysis to ensure that we weren't violating the rights of the actual applicants in trying to develop the property.
So it would, the city could potentially face liability and exposure to a lawsuit by the current title holder and/or the current purchaser of that property for our interference with their property rights if we were to do that.
Yeah, that's possible.
Okay. Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris-Offen.
Mistake.
Okay, you're done. Okay. So with that, colleagues, I don't see any other council members on the queue, so we can go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
It's approved. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, where does that take us?
Item five or item four?
Okay, let's go ahead and go with item four, and we'll go ahead and open it up for cards. Okay. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today you may have a bit of a sense of déjà vu. This is a public hearing on the proposed Business Improvement District in Venice in the 11th District. We had this hearing a few months ago, and there was a problem that was identified by some of those opposed to the bid with the public hearing, and the city attorney advised that the process needed to start over. The balloting was redone, and today is the public hearing for the bid. After the conclusion of this public hearing, the city clerk will tabulate the votes, and the results will be announced tomorrow. And it's tomorrow when we actually vote to certify those results. So today is the public hearing. Every person who is here today and wants to speak, according to the law, is allowed an opportunity to speak and will be afforded that opportunity today. And I've already asked the council president, because we have the new voting system today, after everybody who's called has spoken, I just want to see if there's anybody who somehow didn't get called up to make sure that they spoke so that we don't have any issues. So with that, Mr. President, I suggest we begin the public hearing.
I agree. All right, so I want to let everybody know, we're going to allow everybody to come up for a minute each, and we've got 45 cards so far. So we're at a minimum of 45. Often takes a little longer to get through that. But I want to let you know as well, if you find, and it's up to you, we are going to ask everybody that had filled out an opportunity to speak, to come out and speak. If you hear that perhaps there are people being repetitive or it's the same information, feel free to just say you agree or disagree, whatever you'd like, but you still have your minute. We'd start it off, and if you could start coming up. Jed Palker, followed by Margaret Malloy, David Ewing, Becky Dennison, Linda Lux. So if you all can start coming up, and then state your name at your opening as well so we know exactly who you are. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service. My name is Jed Palker. I live in Venice. Understanding that many or most of you inherited our homelessness crisis, I ask that you all oppose this bid. It can't do homeless outreach. It can't give citations. It can't move belongings. It can't cite illegal short-term rentals or Ellis Act violations. Based on facts, it will deny representation. It will drive out existing businesses and residents. It will deepen the homelessness crisis, which has been made worse by some of the very and illegal businesses behind the bid. It will make the city complicit in denying due process. It will not protect the city from existing service requirements. Venice is exploring secession. Regardless of results of that process, they will definitely loudly publicize perceived failures by this council. Maintaining peace is your first duty. Approving this bid is an invitation to unrest in a community that is desperate to breathe freely. Please oppose this new undue burden.
Hello, Margaret Malloy. This bid requires 12 votes. I'd like to know where the other council people are. This is a very important issue. Hello, council members? Are you present and listening?
Yeah, we also have speakers, believe it or not, in the restrooms and in the back, and so they're all over council chambers.
And in the side, and the periphery, and the other conversations.
They're everywhere.
We would like our due process. We were denied it on many occasions already. We have an email from Debbie Diner-Harris requesting that the issue initially be heard in council, I mean, in committee, because there was such interest. Hello, this is Election Day. This is the rehearing of the suppression of our due process, which caused the first vote to be rescinded. It's a public park. Dean, Judge Dean Pregerson said that public parks are the zenith of free speech. You cannot put a business improvement district in a public park, and the majority of city-owned property is in that public park.
Great. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. I'm going to also ask everybody, since we don't get hisses and boos and applause to, because we want to get through all the speakers, so if you can, please keep your silence so we can go through this hearing. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Becky Dennison. I work with Venice Community Housing, and we strongly oppose the Business Improvement District. I think it's really ironic that we're here on Election Day, where we stand on the shoulders of people who fought for one person, one vote, and the right of everyone to vote, that you are now overseeing a vote that only is allowed for non-residential property owners in a very specific area, even though we will all be impacted by the bid. Venice Community Housing is one of those property-owning voters, although we operate residential property in property that has been approved residential use since 1995 and should not be included in a bid. $10,000 a year for an affordable housing property that will not benefit from any of the marketing, any of the property increases, and that's supposedly what we're paying for. The city also improperly included a lot of their properties, and I just have to say that the longstanding violations by bids against homeless and low-income people- that the longstanding violations by bids against homeless and low-income people in a neighborhood impacted by homelessness is not appropriate, and if you do approve this bid, which I think you should not, you have to address and direct what security can and cannot do in public space to poor people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. And if, again, if we can keep the applause down, and, thank you. And, so, excuse me for one minute, ma'am, we've already warned you, Mr. Herman, the animal sounds, which you just made again, and waving your arms, yeah, your stuffed animals not making the sounds. As funny as you think that is, these speakers have been sitting here all day waiting to speak. You've disrupted this meeting one too many times. Mr. Kokorian asked earlier as well for you to keep it down. We're now going to ask you to leave for the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much for being here. Goodbye. Excuse me, one ma'am. Ma'am, we want to hear everything you've got to say, we want to make sure you're not interrupted. Now you're yelling out, now you're yelling out, disrupting the meeting. If you're going to continue, if you're going to do that, we're going to ask you to stay out even longer, so, keep going, keep going. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Bye, thank you.
For the record, he's still yelling as he's walking out.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, clearly a Trump supporter. Okay, thank you, please, go ahead.
Good day, council members. My name is Linda Lux. I moved to Venice in 1970. I was the president of the Venice Neighborhood Council, president of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. I currently work for Venice Community Housing. I'm speaking, though, as a former resident and who raised her kids right there adjacent to the boardwalk. Venice is not a commercial district. It's 99% residential with a strip of commercial on Oceanfront Walk and on Rose. The residents have had no say in this and are going to be the most impacted. Much as I support Councilmember Bonin's initiatives on homelessness, this is boneheaded. This is not right for Venice, this is completely wrong, and this is not like any other bid that you voted for. This is a residential area with a strip of commercial. You need to think about it. It's going to result in lawsuits, it's going to result in rent-a-cops hurting people, and we have Snapchat security crawling all over the beach area, Google security, we don't need to be a war zone. We have enough LAPD and Google and Snapchat, you really need to think about this. That was it?
Right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, David Ewing, Bill Praleski, Praleski, and you can just form a line, so we can go through them. If you're not up there, we're going to go to the next names, because I've already called you. We're not going to wait every time for each speaker, that's why we're calling several at a time. Marie Kennedy, Mary Kennedy, Sylvia O'Rothe, and Mark Littman, those are the next speakers. So, whoever's up there, in whatever order.
My name is Bill Praleski, I'm the Executive Director of Power. We oppose the bid today. Of all days, highlights the contradictions exposed by the bid. If our national election worked the same way as the bid vote, Donald Trump and his rich friends could put him in the White House without a single speech, ad, or sign. Proponents will say the bid only impacts business owners, so only they have a voice. This is patently untrue. The bid allot's almost $2.5 million in public money over five years. Just blocks away, the Vera Davis Center faces chronic threats of shutdown, privatization, and service cuts because of a lack of funds. The richest tech companies, also right down the street, get a massive tech break. We don't need a bid to pay for services, we need corporations to pay their fair share. The bid is undemocratic, it is taxation without representation, no on the Venice bid.
My name is Marie Kennedy, I'm a Venice homeowner, and I'm chair of the Venice Community Housing Board. If you approve this bid, you are turning over the governance of public space to private, profit-making hands. As a professor of urban planning, I find this deeply disturbing. The Venice boardwalk has a particularly well-used and important public space. It has long been one of the few truly racial, multiracial recreational and tourist spaces in LA. As the area gentrifies, and it will, it will inevitably become less welcoming to people of all races and all classes, and instead will be yet another enclave of the white and the wealthy elite. I urge you to turn this down, and I, like a former speaker, do definitely support Councilor Bonin's policies around homelessness, and I don't understand his support of this bid.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sylvia O'Rothe. I'm a longtime Venice resident, and I'm here today to ask you to vote against the proposed bid. I too support Mike Bonin for all the great work he's done around homelessness, but I do not understand his support for the bid. To me, the bid is another thinly veiled attempt by speculators at cleaning up, gentrifying, and privatizing our boardwalk. I've lived in Venice for over 40 years and have never been robbed or accosted, unlike my parents, who lived in Beverly Hills and were robbed at gunpoint twice. Over 70% of the bid budget is for private security and cleanup. How do you think that will affect the unhoused? If Google and Snapchat were not given an 80% tax break, the city might have the funds to provide needed public services, including opening the bathrooms and security, with security which is allegedly needed. The bid process has been an undemocratic mess. Many attempts have been made to meet with the bid consultant, with no response.
Thank you, next speaker, thank you.
Hello, Mark Littman here. Politicians often seem perplexed when their constituents say that we don't trust you, that there's corruption and collusion behind the scenes that go to benefit your wealthy donors. Well, this is exactly why. When you're pushing forward something that is a clear violation of the Coastal Act, number one, that circumvents the democratic process where only the wealthy property owners get to vote on privatizing our public spaces, while this vote, I'm told, one district won't, all the districts will vote for it, only because when your wealthy contributors come to you and want to put something in, if you don't vote for this one, then the other councilman might not vote for you. This is collusion and corruption at the worst. These business improvement districts are how your campaign contributors get rich. You all know it, we all know it, and while you're doing this, it's called greed and corruption. That's what this is all about.
Thank you very much, thank you. And again, I'm going to ask, please, if we're going to get through all the speakers, and we want to actually go through the time to keep the applause down, or any boos or hisses as well, please, thank you. Let's be respectful to each one that came out, so, please, sir, come on up. Next speaker, please. Okay, so again, I'm going to go through the next ones, then. David Ewing, is David here?
He's not.
Okay, so take him off. General Dogan, Jefferson Elliott, followed by Steve. Was General Dogan here? No? Take them off, Jeff, okay, Jefferson Elliott.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jefferson Elliott, I'm a homeowner in Venice, and I'm one of many people whose property is zoned both commercial and residential, but both I and my neighbors have only residential. It seems very unfair that we're part of this bid. There should be, we should be exempt, there should be a little bit more, there should be just for commercial. Thank you.
Can I get your name again, sir? I'm sorry, please.
What? What was that?
Your name again, for the record?
Jefferson Elliott.
Great, thank you very much. Chris Collier, Chris, not here, okay. Steve Human, followed by Jay Goodfader, followed by Sam Lapata, and Jack Hoffman.
Good morning, council members. I'm Steve Human with Sidewalk Enterprises. We own two and a half blocks of property on the Venice boardwalk, including the Sidewalk Cafe and Small World Books, which we have owned and operated for 40 years. We support the formation of the Venice Beach Business Improvement District. The city does not have adequate resources, so we want to join our neighbors and pay our fair share by forming a bid. We think a cleaner and safer Venice will be better for everyone, residents, both housed and homeless, merchants and visitors. As longtime community members who love Venice, we look forward to working with the new Venice Beach bid and the larger community to address issues in the district in a manner that all Venice stakeholders can support and be proud of, and that celebrates the unique, eclectic, and diverse character of Venice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jay Goodfader. My family owns the Sidewalk Cafe Restaurant, Small World Books. I grew up and still live in Venice, 40 years now, Cafe's 40 years old this year. I support the bid, and my whole family does, the people at the bookstore, too. I like that, I'd love it if, you know, this was a perfect world and the city could pay to clean everything every day, what it needs, but we have people and kids playing in a public health hazard, and there's not enough cleanup, the bathrooms are a mess, and everything else is a mess. So, a bid, you know, we've been putting forth money to clean the area as much as we can, but without everyone's help, we can't do it, so I support the bid, and I'm happy to pay, you know, more than our share to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. I'm Chris Quair with the LA Titans Union, and just wanted to say that we're standing in solidarity with residents of Venice in opposing the bid, and the community members, the long-term community members that will be displaced inevitably by the bid. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Sam Lapata. I'm a resident of Venice, I also work in Venice. I wanted to show my support for the bid. Venice needs this tremendously. We have huge problems with drug use, vandalism, cleanup, and it would be great to see Venice a little bit cleaner. I want to support the bid, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jack Hoffman. I am a 30-year resident, property owner in Venice. One of my properties is residentially zoned on commercial land, and I'm happy to support the bid. It's the broadest collective effort I've ever seen attempted in Venice to actually apply resources in the direction of cleaning and making our streets safer, which we are in dire need of. The area is way too specific in terms of its problems to be dealt with in a general way, and this allows us to be very precise about what we plan to do with the resources we collect. We appreciate it, and thank you for your support very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mark Sokol, Michael Morris, James Mures, Katie Downing.
Good afternoon, honorable city council members. My name is Mark Sokol, and my family owns the Hotel Irwin, and we've been in Venice since the 1950s. I also participate in Mike Bonin's Venice Forward Group to End Homelessness in Venice, and I want to let you know that we strongly support the bid, we're in the bid zone, and the bid will make Venice cleaner and safer. And while I respectfully disagree with my friends on the other side of the aisle on this issue, I do know, and I really hope and believe, that we can work together on goals that we share, which is to make Venice safer, cleaner, and to end homelessness in Venice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before the next speaker, there's a gentleman that's standing, and while I've, yeah, I've called several names, and you haven't come up yet, I don't think, I don't know if I've gotten your name, do you have your name in?
I was entering into the computer.
Okay, then we'll get to it, sir. If I haven't called your name yet, if I can, we try to keep the aisles clear, please either have a seat, or if you wish to stand, you can, but just stand in the back or on the sides. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Morris, I've been in Venice for 23 years, and I'm here to support the bid today, because I've spent a lot of time in Venice, I've seen the changes and the not-changes that have gone, that have happened. And long story short, you know, that corner needs bid, it's very, very dangerous. As soon as the sun goes down, the predators start hunting the tourists. I've seen robberies night and day. I've seen all kinds of, like, pure insanity, drug dealing, non-stop violence, and you know, it's the second most visited tourist spot in Los Angeles. I mean, Venice Beach in this one area has become a health hazard, and you know, honestly, it's an embarrassment and a shame, you know, that this is part of Los Angeles. It's completely neglected, and it's time to move forward and start taking care of it. It's like the forgotten stepchild that nobody cares about. And you know, it's really a shame that tourists have to come here to be preyed on, non-stop. I see people breaking into cars, people pulling knives on people. I have a stab wound on my hand, and it's ridiculous. Have a great day.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good morning. My name's James Mures, 30-year resident of Venice. I'm currently a board member on the Venice Neighborhood Council. I'm not speaking for the Neighborhood Council, I'm speaking for myself. I live and work within the bid area. I have a property that will be, actually two properties, that will be paying fees. I've managed the Venice Farmers Market for 29 years, which is every Friday morning. I planted 1,400 trees in the early 90s throughout Venice, all the trees on Venice Boulevard. I think it'll be great to have some help cleaning up the community. I know every Friday morning when I go to the Farmers Market, the first thing I have to do is have our cleaning person go around and pick up syringes and broken bottles and other trash throughout the city parking lot, because the city doesn't seem to manage that. The same thing is true in a lot of the tree wells that are up and down the sidewalks on the major visitor thoroughfares. It's a shame that we don't have the money, but I think that this will help, and I'm happy to do my part. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Katie Downing, and I'm a resident of Venice. I live at 45 Market Street, and I'm strongly in favor of the bid, and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speakers are Paul Abascal, George. This has got to be a typo, I'm guessing. So, George, if you're there, I don't want to guess the last name. Paul Abascal, you had two cards in, so you only have one opportunity to speak. George Francisco, I apologize, it's an A, not a Q. Francisco, okay, got it. Suzanne Thompson and Andy Lehman.
Hi, I'm Paul Abascal, a 30-year resident of Venice. I own a home just off the boardwalk. I fully support the bid proposal, the bid's influx of money, and new energy is exactly what the oceanfront desperately needs. It will help restore it back to what it was intended to be, a clean, safe, beautiful place for people to enjoy where the laws are enforced. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, my name is George Francisco. I'm a 25-year resident of Venice. I am currently the vice president of the Venice Neighborhood Council. I'm a member of the Pacific Division's Police Advisory Board. I'm also the president of the Venice Chamber of Commerce. Today I'm here as an individual, long-term resident, and also as the president of the Chamber of Commerce to officially support the creation of the Venice Beach bid. From some of the things you made here, you would assume that Venice is teeming with corporations, law firms, accounting firms. If you take away Whole Foods, Google, and Snapchat, our Chamber of Commerce membership is strongly made up of small businesses, over 350 that have between 1 and 15 employees. We're strongly in support of a healthier business environment, more activity, and a way to make our streets safer for residents, visitors, and property and business owners alike. We support the bid, I'd appreciate your support, too. I'd also hope that you allow every single last person to speak this time. Thank you all.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Suzanne Thompson. I'm a 30-year resident of Venice and a former president of the Venice Neighborhood Council, founder of the Venice Arts Council, and a member, founding member of the Venice Japanese America Memorial Monument Committee, but I am here today as an individual, and with my work that I've done through the Venice Arts Council, the Endangered Art Fund, I've spent over 10 years trying to find resources. Councilman Bonin and Councilman Rosendale have been supportive and very appreciative of that. One of the main things that I really am supportive of this bid is to be able to have the restrooms open 24/7. We have a wonderful Venice Beach poet's monument that's located on the public restrooms and the police and recreation substation on Venice Beach, and we need resources desperately to maintain our public art, because art is always at the bottom of the barrel for funding. So, please support this, and thank you, Councilman Bonin, for your support.
Thank you very much. So, Andy, followed by David Bush, Tara Devine, Gene Cunningham, and Michael Hamilton.
My name is Andy Lehman. I'm the owner-operator of Venice Beach Suites and Hotel, which is a 105-year-old hotel at the center of Venice Beach. I've owned this property for over 30 years. One thing I want to reassure an awful lot of people is, the last thing I and most of my constituents want is this place to turn into a Santa Monica Third Street promenade. We want to keep the funkiness, the bohemian atmosphere. Most of us property owners on the boardwalk know the homeless down there. We try to help them, and this is one opportunity for us property owners to join together and provide additional funding for the funding for the homeless. So, I am strongly in favor of the bid. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Tara Devine, Devine Strategies Consultant to the Venice Beach Bid. I'm going to keep my remarks very brief. I simply want to make sure there are some people here in support today who have elected not to speak to you, but they did take the time to come out today to show their support. But I'd like to ask everyone in support to please stand briefly. If you have any questions for me, I'm available. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning or afternoon, council members. My name is David Bush. I've been both a resident housed in Venice Beach when I worked for the city as a diesel mechanic and also homeless as I am today. I've also opened up several food lines and been long involved in homeless issues in Venice Beach. There's a pressing need in Venice, but it's not for a bid. It's for security guards to guard some toilets. We have over 1,000 homeless people every single night in Venice. And when I was arrested and put on trial for opening up a toilet in the face of this lack, I was told by the LAPD who tried to get toilets opened there that they didn't have the money because you of the city couldn't find the money for security guards for toilets in Venice Beach at night. How is it that you can find money and create assessments through a scheme for, to guard businesses during the day when you can't find the money to meet a basic fundamental human right for security guards for toilets for homeless people at night? If you're going to have a bid, at least make sure that it guards some toilets for homeless people at night.
Thank you. Again, please, if we can keep the applause down. Thank you.
Good morning, Los Angeles County, Los Angeles City Council members. My name is Jean Cunningham. I'm a retired senior. I own a residential property on a C-zone lot in the 200 block of San Juan Avenue, Venice. There are four other residential property owners in the 200 block of San Juan with C-zoned lots. We all oppose the bid. There are no businesses or commercial uses on any of our properties. No businesses, just residential homes and rentals on parcels that are unlucky enough to be zoned commercial. City services work very well on San Juan Avenue. We have no complaints except for the fact that our properties were placed into the bid with no notice, no chance to participate in the formative process, and no benefit to our property should the bid be approved. Why was the arbitrary formation of the bid done in secret? Why are parcels with no possible business or commercial use placed in the bid? Why is a commercial building at 248 Westminster Avenue, my next-door neighbor, that is a four-story office, Zone C2, which houses Snapchat, not in the bid? Please reconsider this.
Thank you.
I guess it's afternoon now. Good afternoon. My name's Michael Hamilton, 57-year resident and property owner in Venice, 702 Hampton Drive. The biggest question I have in regards to this is just what the gentleman just talked about now. Hampton Drive, there's 10 homes between Vernon and Indiana that are all residents, they are C-zoned, but they've never, in the 50, really 60 years that they've been there, they've never been any type of business. And now we've been, I'm going to say gerrymandered into this thing. Wanted to find out why. We have no voice in it. And I do support what you do for homeless people, I do, but to do this for residents, I think is very unfair. And why is Abbot Kenny, there's not, nothing on Abbot Kenny is included in this. And you're talking about, some guy was just talking about Venice Boulevard. I mean, that's just as close as Abbot Kenny is. So, I want to thank you very much and please reconsider, if nothing else, take a look at the houses that are there that have nothing to do with any businesses. We're not going to be a business, don't plan on being a business. No one's a resident.
Thank you. Abigail Dunlap, followed by Walt, Center Fit, Liza Zapersky, Kevin, Ragsdale, and Rich. Come on up. Thank you. Morning. Good afternoon.
Abigail Dunlap Myers, I just wanted to say I support the bid.
Thank you very much.
As a resident.
Thank you.
Walt Center Fit, speaking on behalf of over 100 members of the Los Angeles Tenants Union who live in this district, in this area affected by this. We strongly oppose the creation of the bid. We strongly support the idea of a community coming together to organize for the rights of all residents, including its houseless ones, and for the cleanup and creation of amenities and access to those amenities that everybody needs. But the bid is an anti-democratic way of movement, whose history across the country and our city in terms of its disparate impact on the most vulnerable among us is clear. If the question is resources, there are ways to create resources without adding to the problems by which people can hire people to do neighborhood, community cleanup that's democratically accountable to everybody in the district, not to people who are, happen to be business owners and are, have a right to vote by sake of their operation of private property.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning. My name's Kevin Ragsdale. I'm a 20-year resident of Venice and I've owned an artist-in-residence building in Venice for over 16 years. Now, this whole bid process has been exclusionary, which I don't really understand, and it's been done in secret. We just found about, out about it a few months ago. And, you know, my repeated attempts to meet with you, Mike, have been denied over and over with a group of us and I can only think that it's because you
If you could address, address the council as a whole, please.
And the council as a whole, whatever. And my family will be affected to the tune of thousands of dollars in order to take care of properties that have owners that I don't know are, you know, too lazy or too incompetent or whatever, can't take care of their own properties. And I don't understand the undemocratic vote that we've heard about over and over and over. You know, gerrymandering the medians in the parking lot was a dirty trick and you can't pass this without it. And that's because this is something that the community overwhelmingly does not want. Let the owners and businesses pay for their own security.
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Again, please, thank you.
Hi, my name is Rich Ragsdale. I've been a Venice resident for about 25 years and I oppose the bid very strongly. And this sort of dystopian sort of picture that a lot of pro-bid people present, you know, is very hyperbolic, is not really true. I live, I own a house right off of the boardwalk and, you know, I don't find any of that stuff to be true. I feel very safe. It seems very clean and I just think that it will disproportionately affect, you know, the homeless people and I just think it's not a good thing. And I urge you guys to change your mind on this. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
My name is Liza Zapersky and I'm the leasing specialist at Perloff Webster in Venice who own property in the proposed BID district. We strongly oppose the bid. I agree that the boardwalk needs attention to address the issues of cleanliness and homelessness, but the BID is not the way to do this. Added security is not the way to address homelessness. Buildings in Zone 2, especially those that are residential and office buildings who will not benefit from banners, extra trash pickup, lights, and security should not be the ones to have to subsidize those on the boardwalk in Zone 1. Also, at least 25% of the properties in the BID are the city's properties. So, likely, the city's vote will be the deciding factor and I believe this is improper and outrageous. For a small group of property owners to be handed $1 million a year with no oversight is astonishing. Me and those at Perloff Webster strongly oppose the bid.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, come on up.
Thank you very kindly. I'm representing Aqua by LA and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I realize that is actually a privilege that may be taken away soon, so we actually appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak before you. Our First Amendment right is very important because when we lose our First Amendment right, we're going to lose our Second Amendment right. When we lose our Second Amendment right, we're going to be a dictatorship, going to be like communist country that we talked about. Okay, I'm here because I think, I like the idea. I know that some property owners might, might, might be against it, but if you can make some of the restrictions and some of the observations that they have suggested, I'd be in favor of it. Also, I'd be in favor of you allowing us to have First Amendment right so we can display our signs and be able to communicate First Amendment rights like baby lives matter. We had a big, big, big thing on Sunday, baby lives matter. Not all lives matter, but all colored babies, after nine, after six months, late-term abortion should have restrictions. It's murder. Go on YouTube, watch it. Late-term abortion is murder. Don't be fooled, it's murder.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mary Ann Dill, Guy Dill. Sir, if you're going to disrupt the meeting, we're going to ask you to leave. Elizabeth Kitchen, Marlene, Okuluk, Okulik, Rachel Rodrick Jones, and John Okuluk, Okulik. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman Bonin, I am a working artist, 46 years in Venice. The property I'm on is not commercial, there's no merchant activity, no stores, restaurants, hotels, and there's never been any businesses on it or commercial activity of any kind. We're put into Zone 1, which is the most expensive part of this bid, which makes no sense for east-of-Pacific properties. And we're also subject to what is being called the corner penalty, where we pay twice as much as other properties. This is some kind of blanket sweeping method of getting more assessment for the bid and that's why these residents are being included. We don't have tourists in our area, we don't have litter, we don't have trash, we don't have encampments, we take care of our property. We don't need special cleaning and we don't want to or agree with a private police force. We don't want ambassadors, marketing efforts, or promotion. We want to work and we want to be left alone. That's it for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Elizabeth Kitchen. I oppose inclusion in the Venice bid. I am an artist and I have a studio on Innis Place. I am not a merchant, I have no commercial or industrial businesses on my property. I already maintain my property to a high standard. I do not need crowd control or ambassadorial services, transit info, or tourism help. I will repay a huge assessment fee for business services that mostly benefit the tourism and businesses on Venice Boardwalk, a business assessment that will go up 5% each year. This is a big financial burden on me. Therefore, I'm requesting to be excluded from this Venice bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm a little nervous, just so you know that. I'm an artist-in-residence in a property that we've owned for over 35 years in Venice. We've changed our zoning to artist-in-residence and we love being an artist-in-residence. We feel that this bid is unlawful and misguided. The Venice bid was created from an obsolete zoning ordinance established nearly 100 years ago. This is a faulty and misguided system for classifying properties in 2016. The determination for inclusion in this bid should be for modern-day usage, not outdated zoning ordinances. Proposition 218 states, "A business improvement district, X, assesses the properties in the district in proportion to the benefits each will receive, as well as to ensure the benefits to those parcels receiving our true special benefits and not general benefits to locality as a whole will receive." This bid exclusively benefits the Venice Boardwalk as it was intended.
I'm sorry, can I get your name again for the record?
Marlene Okulik.
Got it, okay.
Two more, two more things.
Yes, we can't, it's limited to time. I'm sorry, ma'am, otherwise I have to open it up to everybody again and so I can't do that. So, thank you. Ma'am, I can't. Ma'am, now you're disrupting the meeting, Sergeant. Can you please ask her to have a seat? We're going to have to escort you to out of chambers if you'd like. You're disrupting the meeting, that's your final warning. Thank you. We've got to be fair and equal to everybody across the board on this. Thank you.
John Okulik, that lady's wife or husband, and I am opposed to this business improvement district, which is really based originally for the Venice Boardwalk. All of these people, all the proponents of this bid are mostly on the boardwalk and I am about a quarter of a mile inland from the boardwalk. I have no business connections. My building is a commercial and residential. I'm being taxed, 50% of my property tax is going, is going to go up 50% for 50% of the benefits, so-called benefits. Tara Devine, this lobbyist that's working in tandem with the city, has refused to answer questions, although Mr. Bonin, I did have a meeting with him, he's been pretty good. We would like to be excluded from this. The equivalent of 50% increase is like
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I, my name's Mary Ann Dill. I oppose the formation of the business district. I believe it was created for and by, by and for the boardwalk and really has nothing to do with east-of-Pacific properties. We are also on a street that has no business activity, it never has. We don't have any hotels, no restaurants, no stores, no merchant activity. We understand the boardwalk wants this, but they have just drafted properties into it to increase the revenue because there's no benefit that we would receive. Also, we're in Zone 1, which is crazy, being two blocks east of Pacific. There's just really not the same problems we have there. Also, I don't believe the bid addresses the real problems of Venice.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Rachel Rodrick Jones and for the last 28 years, we've owned a five-unit apartment building at 1411 Innis Place, which is zoned commercial, but it is and always has been an apartment building. We are being assessed $3,662 by, by the bid plus an additional 5% compounded every year after five years. And that's a huge amount considering we're not a business. We'd be subsidizing those that will, the boardwalk merchants. We are also in rent control, subject to a different set of rules that pertain to housing providers. We are unable to maximize, of course, our building's full potential with or without a bid. But today I did hear from Counselor Bonin's office, Debbie Diana Harris, so thank you, Debbie, wherever you are, for letting us know that, whoops, that will be a mystery.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next speaker, Jeffrey Harris, followed by Alan Rodrick Jones, Leah Renee, Judy Branfman, Sylvia Shane, Roseanne Bofa, Mike Dill.
My name is Jeff Harris and I manage property on the boardwalk. I've been doing so since, for 12 years. And I've seen some of the unique challenges that the boardwalk has. Like the other speaker said, at nighttime, it's very sketchy, so much so, we hire private security. And what I've found is our private security was able to meet with the community, meet with the Pacific Division, and as long as you have a synergy between the private security and the Pacific Division, you shouldn't have a problem with, you know, out-of-control private security. It's desperately needed. Venice is the second most frequented place in this state. We can do much better with all of the people that are down there. It's a soft target, we do need deterrents. We need eyeballs on the beach, we need video cameras, and we need things after if a crime occurs. We had a recent crime and there was no witnesses. Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Judy Branfman. I've been in Venice 24 years and I encourage you to oppose the bid. I just, I come from four generations who've lived in or slept on the beach, all tenants in Venice, and no one has ever been accosted, ever. And the same for me, I'm a really late-night person. I walk down to my car down Main, Rose, Hampton by peacefully sleeping people and I'm probably the worst offender waking them up. I've never, ever had a problem. And I wanted to say, it's come to my attention that excessive force problems in bids around the city have forced the city attorney to send letters to the BIDs telling that all security patrols will need to be registered with the L.A. Police Commission. So, I think something has been going on that maybe you're not looking at or possibly aware of yet, but there are problems with BIDs and I think it's really ironic that you have HHH on the ballot, but you are finding backdoor ways of criminalizing the homeless.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sylvie Shane, I strongly oppose the bid. This is a misappropriation of public money to serve private interests. This is money that belongs to all of us. Bids have a storied history in marginalizing the poor through the use of private policing, and this is not the right way to go about it. I hope that anyone on this council who considers him or herself a progressive will recognize that this is just a way to take from the 99% to serve the 1%.
Hello. My name is Roseanne Bofa. I am the deputy director of Normal. I sent everyone a Margolin guide. I hope everyone got one. I'm here to talk about Venice. I've been living in Venice for over 30 years, and I'd just love anyone to answer the question. If it's a public beach, why are we talking business? You don't go to Yosemite and see the Gap. And this is what they're trying to make us, the Gap. I get on my bike every night, and I ride pier to pier. I've been living in Venice for 30 years, and no one has ever even approached me. I've never felt unsafe. So, I don't understand why we're turning it into a business district and dragging people who are not. But you know what happens? It becomes a business district, and then only business takes over, and we change the face of Venice. I have a petition with almost 700 people in Venice, property owners that don't want it. And one last thing I have to say. Who opposes it? Can I hear? Please. Every single week, we talk about somewhere else. Gentrifying.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. My name's Mike Dill, born and raised in Venice. My family owned property there long before I was born. I oppose the bid. There are problems that are unique to Venice, but the bid is definitely not the answer to any of those problems. In 2016, the suggestion of a private security force is just unethical and unconscionable. It doesn't serve the people, and what this is really going to benefit is rich, white people, and that's it. We all understand that.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name's Alan Rodrick Jones. My wife was just stopped by the bell, so I'd like to finish for her. She received yesterday, early this morning, an email from Debbie Dinah Harris. I quote from that, and she says, "From what I understand, your property would still be in the boundaries, but not able to be assessed if it was zoned residential." So, obviously, we have to follow through and try and get our property zoned residential. We've had this property for 28 years, and it's an apartment block for five apartments. So, it may cost us, but we're willing to go ahead. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, Leah Renee. Dear Mayor Garcetti and council members, you must vote no on Council File 160749 because, as I've outlined in my letter to you today, you are illegally using California Street Highways Code 36600 and sequential to evade the city's duties and the people's rights under law. The intent of SHC 36600 is for businesses that are economically disadvantaged or underutilized and that are unable to attract customers. City of Venice is not, doesn't have the light, and it's not economically disadvantaged. And so, why don't you just collect the fees that you're not collecting? Why not collect the taxes you're not collecting? Why do you allow a whole group of people to just not have to pay into the fund? Because if you collected it, then maybe you'd have enough money to put in trash cans or replace sewers or all the other things you need. It's all outlined in my letter to you today. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much. All right, that concludes all the speakers on this item. And so, with that, Mr. Bonin?
Yeah, Mr. President, just, I want to be extra careful on this one, given the problems with the last public hearing. Is there anybody here who filled out a card or tried to speak on this who has not been heard yet?
Mr. Previn, you actually spoke through the council already and had your maximum three minutes per the council rules. So, thank you very much. Yes, it was true. Okay. You spoke on all, Mr. Previn. Come on up for your one minute.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2. We have a bid. In Chatsworth, you had a bid. I talked about it last week. Sometimes bids make sense, but in Venice, it makes absolutely no sense. And this one, I looked at closely the first time it came to this council. It was exclusionary. The tallying up of votes was appalling. There was a, it smells to high heaven, quite frankly. And you've heard from many, many residents from the area who are residents, sir. The city has problems with finances and so on and so. I have an idea for you, okay? Google decided recently to cancel their fiber optic program. If you want to keep the bathrooms open, let's have Google make a donation to put the bathrooms on 24-hour. They'll cover the cost. I can assure you, they'd be happy to. After burning rubber in this city, after telling the people of Los Angeles that they were going to put this big new-- and now they just quietly say goodbye to Ted Ross. We're moving forward. It didn't quite work out the way they wanted to. I honestly feel that the city council ought to oppose this bid. The people have spoken. Too many people have been pushed this way and that. It's not appropriate. This is a special cultural landmark in Los Angeles. Don't screw it up. It's not universal studios.
Thank you. Thank you. Out of time. Thank you very much. All right, so there are no other cards. Were there anybody else that filled out? I believe we had one from Mr. Walsh, who was also out of time, but I don't see him. Okay, so with that, no other speakers on this item. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for your attention, your patience on this matter. I want to thank everybody who came down here today to testify both sides of this issue. You know, often, it's the case that issues in Venice are contentious, 50/50, and this is certainly no exception. We've heard a lot of very strongly-held opinion on both sides of this issue, and a few folks have asked, you know, "Why would you be doing this?" One of the things that is a tremendous benefit of having a Business Improvement District in Venice is it brings additional resources and investment into the public area to help us keep the area, the beach, and the neighborhoods near the beach, all the way over to east of Main Street, safer and cleaner. The number-one issue that I hear about from folks in Venice universally is safety, is cleanliness. When I visit the St. Joseph Center and serve meals, I talk to people who are homeless, who say that they feel sometimes unsafe in Venice and wish things were safer and were cleaner. And this is a way to help address that by bringing in money that we wouldn't otherwise have. I would say, I acknowledge that there have been issues and problems with bids in other areas, but there have also been bids that have been very successful and have been great partners in solving homelessness. In Pacific Palisades, we have a bid that has actually worked with the Pacific Palisades Task Force on Homelessness and has helped get people housed. In Westchester, also in my district, the Westchester Town Center has helped hire people assisting the homeless path and helped people get off the streets there, and it has been very useful and very helpful. I would say, some folks have said, "This is not the way to solve homelessness." I think you're absolutely right. This is not meant to solve homelessness. This is meant to help promote the area. This is meant to help clean the area, and this is meant to help provide more security for the area. There are many, many things we need to do to help solve homelessness in Venice. I have enumerated 18 of them. You're all very familiar with them. Some of you support them. Some of you oppose them, but they're all very well-known, and that's how we solve homelessness in Venice. I would say that my hope on this, because as I said, there've been good bids and there've been bad bids, is that this bid work to help on the issue of homelessness. I would like to see this bid work with the C-3 that Sheila Kuhl just announced a few weeks ago. I would like to see this bid work with the HOPE teams, which are now functioning in Venice, to help get people into housing. And having the extra security at the beach, David, is an opportunity, then, to keep the bathrooms open because we will have additional eyes and ears and security down there. I would just say one final thing to those who talked about the fact that they have properties that are zoned commercial but are used as residential. As I said when I met with a few folks recently, I am happy to help those folks get their properties rezoned as residential properties, and am happy to meet with those folks and would even be willing to initiate the zone change from my end to make it a little less expensive and more helpful. I know a lot of folks have bought into properties that have been used residential but have been zoned commercial for a long time, and that's something we can certainly work on fixing. So, I want to thank everybody who came down here today on this issue. That'll conclude the public hearing, and then the ballots will be tabulated this afternoon and announced and certified by the council tomorrow. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, colleagues, there actually, there won't be a vote on that, but I do want to let the public know that the public hearing is closed, and the ballots will be tabulated after this meeting in Room 223. The results of the ballot tabulation will be announced at council tomorrow. So, thank you all for coming. That item is complete, and now we'll go ahead and go on to the next item, Item 5.
Item 5 was called special by Councilman Sadio, and Amendment Motion 5A has been circulated and posted.
Okay, so with that, okay, Carlos, on Item 5, Carlos A. I don't have a last name, just Carlos, but last initial A. Followed by Margaret Malloy, Bill Przyluski. Carlos?
Thank you. Carlos Aguilar, Coalition for Economic Survival. CES fully supports this tenant buy-out agreement program. Unfortunately, landlords and developers intimidating and pressuring tenants to accept the cash-for-keys deals persists, making approval of this ordinance urgent. Many tenants don't know their rights, believing they have no choice but to leave and opt out to take that money and subsequently leave. We believe this problem is really more widespread than is noted, with many landlords getting away with this. We find these cases only when impacted tenants contact CES or other tenants' rights groups or HCSID. This ordinance will provide some needed protections and a process for buyouts that will hopefully stop some of this illegal activity. We believe it's crucial that copies of the detailed contract be filed with HCSID to help tenants ensure the agreement terms are upheld. Opponents will claim privacy issues, but these documents are public and should not be considered for special protection since that would remove the information from public view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Przyluski, Executive Director of POWER. We support the amendment to the RSO. We support notifying tenants about their rights and about having stricter rules around voluntary vacates, cash-for-keys, buy-out agreements, whatever you want to call them, especially in the coastal zone where the Mellow Act requires one-for-one replacement of existing affordable units. We've seen cash-for-keys buyouts as one tool that developers have used to avoid their responsibilities under the Mellow Act, and it's incredibly difficult to enforce without tracking them. We need public records of these buyouts, and we need tenants to be informed of their rights so that we can preserve more of our RSO housing. Thank you for considering this and moving forward on it.
Thank you. All right, Jim Clark, Margaret Malloy, Chris Kuhler, Mark Simon, Beverly Kentworthy.
Hello, council. I would strongly recommend actually going beyond this proposal. I think that there should be a mandatory registration of all buyouts on the part of tenants and landlords. I've submitted documents to the Housing Committee showing a pattern amongst some of the people proposing the bid, ironically, who have time after time converted residential apartment units into short-term rental hotels. They're just violating due process. They, it's cash-for-keys. There is a paper trail of numerous complaints to LADBS for illegal change of use. Closed, no violation. That remains to be really investigated because it's gone on for years in Venice. There's no reason for it. So, please support this initiative, and please consider a mandatory registration of all buyouts. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Simon, the L.A. Tenants Union. I strongly support this initiative. I have seen such, as a member of the L.A. Tenants Union, every single week, I see such flagrant abuse, primarily of poor people, by this cash-for-keys because they have none, it's done without any kind of paperwork. I have literally seen representatives of management not only refuse to give people any kind of a business card or even tell them their last name. We need some kind of documentation. Some people on one of the blocks where I live, they're currently, they signed an agreement, and then they foolishly didn't ask for any kind of documentation, but now the management company is refusing to give them the money. They took the cash-for-keys, and now they're having to file a lawsuit. So, we definitely need some kind of legal document, and the one that the RSO is proposing seems really fine.
So, Jim Clark? No longer here? Chris Kuhler? Okay. We'll check your name off as well. Beverly Kentworthy? I don't see Beverly here. Take her name off as well. Donna, I believe, already left? Ola? No longer here? Okay, and the last one we got in was after we started the item. So, Sylvia, we'll log in that you filled out a card, but that concludes public comment on this item. Mr. Koretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a problem that still continues to go on, and so I would say it is urgent that we finalize this ordinance. We do have an amendment, Amendment 5A. According to the city attorney, this can only be an instruction to draft the amendment to the ordinance. So, but I would say this is fairly urgent, so I'd like to ask that we direct that it returned to us by the day before our last meeting before Thanksgiving.
Okay, and yes, that is correct. This is just an amendment and still requesting the city attorney to draft the ordinance.
But we would ask that it be done very expeditiously this month.
We can certainly respectfully request that that go to the city attorney with that instruction as a request. So, we'll go ahead and do that. Colleagues, seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. And next items, please. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Koretz?
At the request of, oh, he came back here.
At the request of the colleague sitting next to you.
At the request of this guy sitting next to him, I'm a little shy today, so I asked my colleague to do it. Council President, we could reconsider Item Number 1 next, and we have an amendment. We have worked out a payment plan.
Very well. We'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration, for reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that item now has been circulated?
It's been circulated, yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take up the roll on, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, what else do we have on the desk?
I believe there's a request to send all items today forthwith.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection. Next items, please.
That takes council to motions for posting and referral.
All right, those are posted and referred. Do we have any announcements, colleagues? Okay, we've got to remind everybody that to make sure that if they haven't yet voted today, today, yes, is election day, and so make sure that you get out there and vote. The polls close at 8:00, and make sure that you do go out and cast your vote today. Thank you very much. Mr. Price?
One, the Economic Committee will be meeting at 1:30. 1:30. And yesterday, it was a momentous day in the city of Los Angeles. Our colleague, Mark Williams, has a birthday, and I just want to acknowledge his birthday yesterday. I'm glad he's with us today.
Fantastic. All right, and that means that he is now still the youngest member of the city council. So, with that, do we have any other announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, do we have adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions? We have adjourning motions, so if we can get everybody to please rise, everybody in council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Koretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sometime tonight, the United States of America may well achieve a historic first regarding a woman-- a woman reaching the highest level of public office, and that would be a landmark occasion of significance, but it's also important that we remember other women who broke through glass ceilings of their time, and one of them, Janet Reno, passed away yesterday at the age of 78, following a long battle with Parkinson's disease. She was our country's first female Attorney General, having served in the White House under President Bill Clinton from 1993 to 2001. She was known for her profound determination to do what's right, and her willingness in that regard to make tough and sometimes thankless decisions. Born in Florida, she attended Cornell University and then Harvard Law School, where she was incredibly inspired to hear one of her great heroes, Eleanor Roosevelt, speak. After graduating, she was a prominent attorney, before becoming the first woman ever to serve as Florida State Attorney General, a post she held for 15 years before becoming the nation's 78th Attorney General. Her years as our country's Attorney General were filled with major headlines, stories, and challenges. She oversaw several successful prosecutions involving acts of terrorism, and those convicted included Ted Kaczynski, better known as the Unabomber, Sheikh Omar Abdel Rahman for the 1993 World Trade Center bombing, and Timothy McVeigh and Terry Nichols for the 1995 Oklahoma City bombing, an act of domestic terrorism that claimed 168 lives. She was also involved in ordering federal agents to raid the Branch Davidian compound in Waco, Texas, to end a standoff that started before she took office. She was also swept up in controversies, real or manufactured, associated with Bill Clinton, including the Whitewater investigation. A Republican-controlled congressional committee voted to cite her for contempt regarding memos she hadn't yet turned over, but the full House never took a vote on that matter. After leaving her post as Attorney General, she would become Florida's, she would run to become Florida's governor, but narrowly lost in the 2002 Democratic primary. There will always be glass ceilings to break, and it's important that we remember those who were pioneers that came before us. So it's really moving today that according to news reports, many women are leaving "I voted" stickers on the grave of Susan B. Anthony, who was arrested in 1872 for voting. She was a pioneer, as was Janet Reno, and so today, even as we await what might be one of the biggest breakthroughs of all, we honor the past and adjourn in memory of Janet Reno.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, we're adjourned. Go vote, and be safe. Thank you.